So just give us a few minutes to make sure we have everything turned on. So Mayor, are you ready to call the meeting to order?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Jamie, if you would go ahead and start the panel. I am setting the start time for 6:05.
Okay, ready to go. Order of the meeting, the common council for Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021. Clerk?
All 12 are present, Your Honor.
We'll proceed. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation, which will be offered by a guest from the community introduced by Alder Craig Stevens.
A pledge of allegiance. The flag. The United States of America. And to the Republic.
One nation.
Under God. In the visible. With liberty.
And justice.
For all.
Alder Stevens.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Everybody, please have a seat. Again, I have chosen to reach out within our community to invite individuals to conduct our invocation. This time, I chose a friend, I chose a friend and colleague from our home state of Michigan, Sean Smith. Mr. Smith has a degree in mortuary science and brings over 20 years of experience to the funeral services. Before he moved to Green Bay, Mr. Smith served both stateside and overseas within the U.S. Army as mortuary affairs specialist. Five years ago, Sean decided it was time to move closer to home. It was available in Green Bay. Mr. Smith became the managing funeral director for a family-owned funeral home. Newcomer Cremations Funerals and Receptions. Newcomer is located within our downtown area. Director Smith, thank you for taking the time to address our guests this evening. I will now forward this over to you.
Looks like you're still muted, Mr. Smith.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, Alder Stevens, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. As was mentioned, my name is Sean Smith, and I'm the managing funeral director here at Newcomer in downtown Green Bay. It's my honor to be able to offer this invocation and to be with you tonight. As we've ended the pandemic year of 2020 and moved into a new year, we have carried with us the continued challenges, dangers, and polarization that we've endured with the COVID-19 virus. Funeral professionals across our nation have been a different type of essential first responder, known to many within our communities as the last responders of this pandemic. The silent ones that don't see the healing, the recovery, but rather the sadness of death, and families who never anticipated having to mourn the loss of their loved ones without the normal rites and rituals for which our society is accustomed with. We have watched as this virus has stolen the lives of our valuable citizens with no regards to age, sex, religion, culture, political affiliation, or lifestyle. We have comforted those who have lost loved ones within our community from the far-stretch impact of this virus, not only directly dying from COVID-19, but also an increase in drug overdoses within our community, suicides, domestic violence, depression, and our valuable elderly in community-based housing that fail to thrive and interact as they once did with their beloved family and friends. This year for me marks 22 years since the day I first walked through a funeral home door in Upper Michigan's Peninsula. At that time, I will admit, I was probably much younger and skinnier and naive in thinking that I could make a family situation better. Through the years, I have been humbled to know that we can't fix the loss of a loved one, but only help make the process easier. This past year, it has been even a challenge to do that. Never had I imagined that I would see in my career this plague of our modern day and its far-reaching impacts. My career and that of my colleagues at my funeral establishment and those throughout our city and surrounding villages have played a special role in this community throughout this pandemic. We have not had the opportunity to see the recovery of those who have been infected with this virus, but rather the very worst outcome. And when our phones ring in the night, regardless of the time or danger of a situation, we have entered homes, nursing facilities, morgues, and active COVID wards in our hospitals to care for our community's dead, putting our safety and our families aside to protect the health of the general public. Tonight, as we come together, I ask that we pause for a moment in prayer and consider the lives of the citizens who have died in our community of COVID-19. Those who have died afraid to seek proper health care from fear of this virus. Those who are suffering from mental health from this pandemic. Students who miss going to school and the normalcy of a childhood that ourselves have enjoyed. I ask us to consider the price we're paying to keep one another safe in a spirit of human camaraderie. As a survivor of COVID-19 myself, who suffered a rather serious case of this virus and is still recovering, I remain humbled, along with my team each day, to be caring for those who have died in this community and didn't have the chance to recover. They're not just a simple tally of the dead. Because if I've learned anything in my career, it's that if one has truly dedicated themselves to death care, they understand that our business has nothing to do with death, but that it has everything to do with life and love. The life of them that we've been entrusted to care for and the love that was shared between them and their family and friends. They are the husbands, wives, mothers, fathers, sons, daughters, and friends in our community. And if we were to see their names and faces today, it would be overwhelming to know the lives that we have lost within our community. And we might feel differently about taking simple safety measures to protect their lives. We see a glimmer of hope in the new vaccines being offered, but we have far to go. Each day, I pray that these death toll numbers don't increase and that I can go back to serving clients that have lived their lives and seen generations of their children's childrens grow. My funeral home alone served nearly 100 more families than we did last year, many who lost their lives to this virus or in connection of it. And as I was asked to give this invocation, I will be completely honest. I don't know how to offer a prayer or invocation that would encompass the depth of the loss that we should feel over those who are no longer with us in our community. I don't know that I could offer an invocation that would express the deep gratitude that we should have for our healthcare, essential workers, and helpers who have done so much for our community in this pandemic. And so the prayer I'd like to offer is the most powerful in my life, and it's a prayer of silence and listening. If you would all please join me now in a moment of those, in a moment of silence for those who have died in the Green Bay community and surrounding areas and the world. Of the bravest of men and women who continue to serve and stand up to this virus each day, keeping to work us safe so that we might pass out of this place of darkness into a place of light. Please join me now in that moment of silence. Thank you much, thank you very much for all of your time and service and allowing myself to speak with you this evening. May God bless you all, may God bless our wonderful city and these United States. Thank you.
Thank you so much for those, those words, Mr. Smith, very poignantly stated. I just wanted to, to thank you, Alder Stevens, for inviting you in. But thank you for, for all the work that you continue to do for our community. It's always very difficult to be in the role that you're in and that line of work and that calling. But now, I think more than ever, as you stated, this is a very difficult time. And so we're just very grateful to you and all your colleagues and everyone serving the people of Greater Green Bay and Northeast Wisconsin in those incredibly critical roles. So thank you for joining us tonight. Now we will move along to the approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder LeFave to approve the minutes of the January 15 and January 19, 2021 meetings. Any corrections? To all C? All right, seeing no requests, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay, the minutes have been approved. Approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Scanell. Any changes? Seeing no requests, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The guys have it, the agenda has, before you has been approved without any changes. Report by the mayor. Make this brief, but really, you know, kind of dovetailing off of some of the comments that Mr. Smith had with regard to the vaccine being here, with us sort of seeing a light at the end of the tunnel on this pandemic. Really just wanted to, to thank all those who are involved in the vaccination effort here locally. You know, I think it's, it's slowly ramping up statewide and across the country. But I think we all have a lot to be proud of with regard to the effort here locally, especially on the part of Prevea and Bellin, vaccinating just a tremendous number of people in this area. I was reading just yesterday that Fenway Park, Austin, is being set up as, as a mass vaccination, vaccination site. And I think they're vaccinating 500 people a day. Well, I think it's important to put that in perspective, that Prevea at 1,100 and growing. Bellin is at several hundred and growing. So like I said, you know, it's kind of slowly moving out across the state, but there's no choke point here locally. It's been a really kind of a, an incredible effort to witness. So very grateful to Prevea and Bellin and all of their employees. You know, they vaccinated our police and fire first responders here in the city of Green Bay, as well as, as others in transit. And hopefully we'll be moving along to some of our utility workers before too long, as well as a number of our educators and, and other employees associated with public education. My, my parents, maybe not wanting me to say this, but they're in that 65-plus demographic. You know, really grateful that they've been able to get their vaccinations. I know a lot of other people are similarly situated and, and grateful that their family members are beginning to get that protection. So, you know, we are nearing the, the end of this pandemic. I think we can see it, but we still have a lot of work to do to keep one another safe. And, you know, just a quick policy comment, obviously, we have an extension of our face covering requirement on the docket tonight. We've made some, some important concessions to those who were previously uncomfortable with that requirement, hoping that we will be able to come together with a, you know, broad majority of council and extend that to at least March 31st tonight. So with that, I will move along to announcements. Just give me a sec. I do see Alder Dorf with her hand raised, so go ahead, Alder Dorf.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want, in keeping with the, what you were talking about with the vaccine, and also in that group that your parents are in, out at UWGB, I want to just reassure everyone that the process is very smooth. The actual needle prick, I didn't feel at all, and I had a slightly sore arm the next day. That was it. So the vaccine is not, for me, way less uncomfortable than the flu vaccine. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
LeFave, go ahead.
Yes, I also want to piggyback on that. My husband, John, and I, we were scheduled for February 9th, and this afternoon, we got a call from Stu's Pharmacy, where I signed up and said that they have vaccines available. Would you want to come in? I says, yes. So we got our sticker, we get stickers. I got mine. We got our first shot, and they're hoping that, they're pretty confident that in three, four weeks that we will get our second shot. And I did ask him about the, I saw in the paper, it said two to five weeks that you should be immune. But he says, he was pretty confident was like two weeks that it would be effective. So I'm hoping that that will help. And we all know that even though we do get the vaccine, that we still can harbor the vac, the virus and pass it on to someone. So we still will have to wear a mask and social distance, do everything that we can until we get a certain point, I think it's like 70, 80% of our citizens being vaccinated, that we can get that herd immunity. So I want people to be hopeful and to look forward. You know, there is a, we can see the light at the end of the tunnel. It's just that we all have to work towards that light at the end of the tunnel and wear a mask and do what we're supposed to do. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Other announcements from council?
Mayor?
Yes, Alder Steyer.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll piggyback on that as well. My wife, Martha, and I got our inoculations last week as well at UW Green Bay. Thank you, Alder Dorf, for reminding me of that, but we did check on our own too. So I think it's a good thing. So I'll be waiting for three weeks for my next inoculation as well. Thank you.
Great, other announcements? Seeing no other announcements, we will move along to appointments. Entertaining motion on a new appointment.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf to confirm the new appointment. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay, the guys have it. The appointment has been approved. Reappointments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax to confirm those reappointments. Any discussion there? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay, the guys have it, and that item has been approved. Ordinance is second, reading for adoption.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All right, we do have a motion made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf to adopt. Any discussion here?
Mayor, if the record could reflect that I'm abstaining because the applicant is a member of my executive committee.
Absolutely. Get a lot of board members, Alder.
It's the same one every time.
I'm just kidding.
I have a busy board member.
Right, that's good stuff. All right, any other comments? Seeing none, we will use the board here.
Mayor, just give me one moment. Okay, everyone should see their vote being displayed. Thank you.
Mayor, mine's not coming up. I vote aye.
And Mr. Mayor, I vote aye, but I'm going to go out and come back in again because none of mine is working, raising the hand or none of this is. So, but I vote aye.
Thank you. I will display the vote now.
Mayor, can I make one comment?
After the roll call is concluded, Alder.
Okay, that, the only comment I want to make is your voice is coming through kind of quiet. Can't quite hear you so well.
Oh, okay, I will speak up.
And that, you can see, everyone can see that, Mayor?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Adopted 11:01 abstention. On to the Improvement in Services Committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf to approve Report K, which is the report of the Improvement in Services Committee from the meeting on January 27, 2021. Any items here to be handled separately?
I have a question on number one.
Just a question, or would you like to?
Well, I'd like, like a clarification from Director Grenier. So I guess, yes, we can pull that.
Okay. Item one will be handled separately, hearing none others. All in favor of approving the remainder of that report? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay? The guys have it, the report has been approved with the exception of item one. Your wish.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. The item was pulled by Alder Steyer. You have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Director Grenier, I was looking over the agenda item and the three options that were there, and they all were worded quite well. At the end, you said the cost might be up to $10,000 to $15,000 to do this, so there is a request for $25,000 in the bond. I just wanted some clarification on that, and that's it. Thank you.
Director Grenier. Since the, since the first meeting, we had staff go back and take a, a better look at it and re-scope it, and we do think that welding on, because we're going to have to put people out in the water on a barge, that it might be more expensive in the $20,000 to $25,000 range. So that reflects updated cost information since the first meeting. Now with that, I'm glad that you, you pulled this for discussion because I've had an opportunity to have a discussion with Director Ditchite as well. We do have the boat launch fund that takes in the receipts from folks who get the passes for, for launching at Metro. And Director Ditchite and I believe that there is sufficient funding in that fund to allow us to go forward with this work without having it in the bond request. I did intend to report that out at the next INS meeting, but if you'd like to make an amendment to the item to, instead of including the bond issued, to use the boat ramp fund, I think that would be very appropriate at this time.
I would like to make a motion. Alder Scanell, I was going to defer, I still have the floor, but I was going to defer to Alder Scanell if you'd like to do that.
Thank you. I'd like to make that amendment.
Second.
Alder Scanell moves to amend the item, seconded by Alder Dorf, to reflect the fact that these improvements will be made out of the boat ramp fund. Any discussion on that amendment? Hearing none?
Wait, Mr. Mayor?
Alder LeFave.
Yes, can I ask Director Grenier, is that going to impact what we want to do at the Metro?
It will not.
Okay. Then I'm fine with it.
Very good. Any other discussion on the amendment? You have a motion and a second. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Guys have it, the item is amended.
Motion to adopt is amended.
Second.
To adopt is amended, made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder LeFave. Any discussion? All in favor will signify aye.
Aye.
Close nay? The guys have it, the item has been adopted as amended. On to the report of the Protection Policy Committee.
So move to accept.
Question? It's Alder Vanderlees. I had my request to speak, but I evidently. Director Grenier, one question?
Previous, I'll finish, yeah, go ahead.
On the sidewalk builders, if, if they do mudjacking, do they have to pull out a separate permit when they mudjack a property in the city of Green Bay? Let's say they're going to do a few houses side by side.
Mudjacking would be the same. Mudjacking would be the same permit as a sidewalk builder.
So if, if they do, if they do a property, they have to pull out a permit through the city of Green Bay then to mudjack, is that correct?
At a minimum, we'd, at a minimum, we'd be looking for them to pull out an obstruction permit if they're, if they're obstructing the public walkway, which is a zero-cost permit. They would not require an excavation permit because mudjacking, you're not actually removing the sidewalk, you're altering it in place.
Okay. So you would, you would want a person that's going to do any mudjacking then to notify the city of Green Bay about it, is that correct?
That would be our preference, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're on the Protection Policy Committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf to approve Report L, which is the report of Protection Policy Committee from the meeting on January 25, 2021. Any items here to be handled separately?
Four and five.
Four and five will be handled separately. Any others? All right, hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay? Yes, have it, the report has been approved with the exception of items four and five. Your wishes on item four?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by, I'll second it by Alder Dorf. Item was pulled by Alder Brunet, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll obviously make some comments in support of the resolution brought forth. Before I do so, I'd like to make a motion to open the floor, and then hopefully that gets second, and I'd like to explain why I would like the floor open.
Second. Motion to open the floor has been made by, excuse me, Alder Brunet, seconded by Alder Johnson. Alder Brunet on the motion.
Yes, I do think it's, at the committee meeting, you know, I mean, let's be real, there is strong opposition to my idea, but there's also strong support in my idea. And so at the committee level, we had about 45 minutes of discussion by Alders on whether we should, you know, partly open the floor. I know there was more, this, see that on this call, on the Zoom session, there are 61 participants, 12 of those, 13, if you include the mayor, are council members. You know, dozen or so city staff, several media members. So really, the number of people who would like to present to the council probably would be no more than 20, possibly less. I did see a, a child who was probably with their parent, from what I could tell. But I just think it's appropriate to hear from the people. If you don't like the resolution, if you're not in favor of it, then vote it down. That's fine, but I think that it's necessary to hear from the, the public as to whether or not they believe the council should support or not support my resolution.
Thanks, Alder. We do have a couple other Alders in the, I'm assuming it's on the motion. Alder Gerlock?
Yes, thank you. I want to, I, I will not vote to open the floor, and I am sure that I will be in the minority. But I want to explain why. I want to make sure that everybody who's going to speak or listen tonight knows very clearly from the start that we have no jurisdiction over the school board and the school system. This is beyond our purview. There's nothing that will be said tonight that is going to change the operations of the school system or change the way that the school board makes its decisions. We can't influence them and we shouldn't. They shouldn't try to influence us. Just imagine if they were holding open sessions, asking people their opinion about what roads should be resurfaced this summer or what parks ought to have fat tire biking tracks. So why do we open the floor when there's nothing that can be accomplished by it? I know people have grievances and they want it on their chest, and it makes them feel good to say that in public. But I would submit to you that this is not the right place for that conversation because it is beyond our purview. I don't know if this is a precedent. I've been told, oh, we have to open the floor, we have to let people speak. Maybe that's the precedent, I'm new here. I think that it is a mistake. I think it subverts the work of the city government. I believe it should, it diverts our resources, it diverts our focus. We should be doing the things that are our work. It might make us popular. It might make us popular. But I'm disappointed to have been put personally in this position of having to speak against opening the floor. And I, again, I know I'll probably stand alone, but I think it's important to preserve the integrity of this chamber, and I don't believe we open the floor to talk about the price of tea in China or to talk about something in Brown County that has nothing to do with our jurisdiction or to talk about the school board's work. So at my age, I'd rather be right than popular.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Dorf on the motion?
Thank you. I do agree with much of what Alder Gerlach said. I am going to vote yes to open the floor. But I asked to speak, because I wonder if we could get some legal clarification as to exactly what we'll be voting on tonight. My understanding is we're really not going to be able to vote a motion. And I wondered if someone could explain that, and if this is the appropriate time, so the public understands what's happening prior to speaking.
Yeah, I think that's a good question, Alder. Either Attorney Chavez or Attorney Bungert?
It's just me. I am flying solo tonight. So this is Attorney Chavez. And so you are correct. So what happened at committee is the item proceeded with no recommendation. When items don't come forward with a recommendation, or they don't pass committee essentially, the items historically have not been placed onto, or the final item for adoption is not placed onto the agenda, the exception being committee of the whole. So right now, the committee would be making a determination, and the next meeting is when the item would actually be on the agenda for adoption itself.
And just a quick clarification on that. Attorney Chavez, it would return to our next council meeting? It wouldn't go through Protection and Policy and then the council?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that. Alder Galvin on the motion?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm also not in favor of opening the floor, not because I want to prevent people from talking. I mean, if the council sees this, I will listen and take notes, just like I read every one of the emails I received on this situation. I also don't feel that this is our responsibility or our job to be doing this. My concern here is that the Green Bay School Board was elected to represent these people. The city of Green Bay Council was not elected to represent these people and school board members. When I ran for election, I ran about better roads, police protection, fire protection, garbage pickup, streets being plowed, the things that we're supposed to be concerned about. If we do coerce the school changing its mind or opening schools sooner, who's responsible for their decision? They are. They're the ones that were elected. And if the people that elected them don't want them around anymore, they can unelect them. But if we force them or coerce them into making a decision that ends up in harming people or causing a problem, do we bear any responsibility? None. Can we be unelected because of what they do? We can't. And so, in part, I don't think, that's one of the reasons I don't think we should be involved. Some of the emails I received, one person said they think this is all being done designed to fuel the fire more and divide the people more. Another one had said, you're wasting time directing another government entity when by doing so you're effectively doing nothing. Another one said, maybe you should focus on the fact that the road in front of my child's school is never plowed before the school day starts. Others talked about, maybe we should be spending our time on the potholes, developing Military Avenue, talk about better plowing of city streets, city streets being safer for kids, flooding and erosion on the East River, things that we were elected to do. We weren't elected to do this. And in a large part, that's why I'm not in favor of opening up the floor, because I don't think this is our responsibility or our place to be telling the school board how to do their business. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. For the record, I think the council is doing a lot of good work on those other issues. Alder Weary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It always seems like there's a reason why we can't do something. Those reasons are always easy to come up with, so I could list off a million of them, I guess. Being the elder statesman, I can tell you personally, we have discussed and passed resolutions to all levels of government. We have spent a lot of time on a lot of different topics. So don't use that as an excuse. I'm perfectly fine if we can't take an hour. Mercy, gosh, we're just so darn busy. I know I got to go and watch some kind of sitcom or something. I don't know. They're here. Let's listen. Let's not have a repeat what happened a couple weeks ago where we didn't open the floor. How pathetic are we? Pathetic if we once again spit in the face of people who show up to talk and we don't even let them talk. That's a horrible, horrible thing to do. So at least open the floor, let them talk, and then we can discuss it and decide what we want to do. Thank you.
Alder Scanell on the motion?
On the motion, yes. I would like to make the point that we have done resolutions in the past, but we never, ever did a resolution like this. We never did a resolution that had to do with the operations of another governing body. This is completely different. And the argument that this is completely out of our purview and not our business really resonates with me very strongly. And part of me wants to open the floor, but then part of me says, how much then are we encouraging people to bring forward items that we should not be dealing with? I really have been focusing the past couple of months, that's the fluoride issue, what's appropriate for us to be doing. Yes, we've done a lot of things in the past. I think there's some things in the past we've done we shouldn't do. This job is hard enough. We've got enough on our plate besides taking on duties that aren't ours. So I'm not exactly sure how I'm going to vote on opening the floor or not. I was thinking initially I would, but I don't know. But either way, I certainly think we're not spitting in anyone's face. We're telling them this is not our business, and sorry, we should not be dealing with this. I believe in the processes of governance, and this is not in our process. This is not in our purview. And I really don't want to encourage people to abuse Alders. This is Alder abuse. We should, excuse me, on what our job is, and getting that across to the public, and educating the public, what's appropriate, and where they need to go for whatever need they have or whatever the complaint they have. This just isn't the place. So this is not like anything we've ever done before. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Brunet for a second time on the motion?
Yeah. Just real quick, we'll debate the merits of the resolution later. The motion on the floor is to hear from the people. If you scroll on the three pages of the Zoom meeting, there are several members of the public who took time out of their schedule to be heard, and I think we owe it to them. This government belongs to the people. Vote down my resolution, call me crazy, it's out there, it should never be brought up. I get all that. That's a discussion we need to debate later, but right now it's about opening the floor to hear from the people, the people who this government belongs to. We're accountable to them, and we should be hearing what they have to say. So that's it.
Thanks, Alder. Any further discussion?
Mayor. Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Well, like Alder Scanell said, our committee's had a pretty large, long, lengthy issues. Seems like a lot of national and state issues are being pushed onto the local government lately, and that is very difficult. But it is what it is. And like it was stated before, we spent 45 minutes at a protection and policy meeting arguing whether to open the floor or not, and the fear was, oh, boy, we're going to have hours and hours, just like the fluoride issue. We had 15 minutes. You know, I was lucky, maybe. I don't know. You know, citizens need to be heard, and transparency needs to be there. Granted, you know, like I said, there's a couple things here. The resolution should be, we'll talk about that later as far as issues and procedures within the city of Green Bay's jurisdiction. You know, a lot of citizens have brought up things like crime, tax impacts, things that will affect us because of students leaving the district, and we can talk about that. So those are issues, those are things that I think we need to know in order to make a well-informed decision. So I vote to open the floor. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Galvin for a second time on the motion?
Thank you, Your Honor. And I'm going to have to disagree. We're not spitting in anybody's face. I mean, I didn't invite those people to come here and talk about an issue that has nothing to do with this elected body. Some other council members did. They're the ones that bear that responsibility. Where do we go from here? Every time some council member wants to get up on his horse and go throw lances at windmills, are we going to have to open the floor every time to have people come and talk about stuff that this has absolutely nothing to do with what we were elected to do? You can call this the people's elected body, and it is. We were elected to talk about roads, police, fire, garbage, plowing, city parks, our riverways. We weren't elected to talk about schools. We were not. And to say that it's our responsibility is erroneous. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Weary on the motion for a second time?
Well, I didn't, sorry, didn't know I had it on again, but I would say we've passed and discussed resolutions to the state, to the county, to the federal government, and spent a lot of time looking and talking about those. You really think we had an effect on that? So we should have either no more resolutions of any kind ever, or when it comes before us, listen to the people who show up.
Thanks, Alder. So without any further comments, we have a motion and a second to open the floor. All in favor will signify.
Put it on the board, please.
Please, the board.
You bet.
My board's not working. All in full, aye. Steyer.
Getting their loogies ready.
Thank you, Alder Steyer.
Alder Steyer, you might want to check in with Director Ronnick, just to make sure that your device.
Yeah, there might be something there. Okay.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Alder Scanell, can you please vote? Thank you. And there's the vote.
The vote is 10 to 2 to open the floor. The floor is open. And before we move along to citizen testimony, as chair, I have it within my purview to limit testimony, and so we're going to limit testimony to two minutes tonight, so that everybody has a chance to speak, so that we can move on to the rest of our agenda expeditiously. So those are the ground rules. The other thing that people should know is they just need to state their name and address, and then begin speaking.
Thank you, Your Honor. If there are any who would like to speak on this item, if you could raise your hands in the chat, please. Okay, and if Barbara Coniff would be able to unmute yourself, and the time will start once you state your name and address for the record.
Hello. Bar 2651 Seneca Court, Green Bay, Wisconsin, 54313. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I heard two words or two thoughts in the invocation that were meaning polarization and the price we pay in support of human camaraderie. You are paying the price for both tonight, because I agree, we should not have to come here and ask you to lend volume to our voices for urging our school district to go ahead and use the safety measures that are at risk to provide the option of both virtual and in-person education for our students. The current planning continues to be inadequate for our opening date, and now we have the requirement of vaccines for teachers before schools can open, a voluntary measure for the employees, which is like saying, well, then let's make masks optional. And by the way, I do support a mask ordinance here in Green Bay if it comes to that, because it will help keep our schools open. I keep hearing the school district say, well, if bars would close, then the schools would open. I do not come to you asking you to shut down the businesses. The businesses have figured out how to keep their customers safe and fulfill their needs in many ways, both virtually and in person. Schools are capable of doing the same. In fact, all the other ones around us are doing it now. You said take your concerns to the school board when I spoke to you at Protection and Policy. We all have done that multiple times. Now there are electronic billboards beaming over our city about the school problem. So what will our visiting business leaders, college students, potential job seekers, think of that? At Protection and Policy, you said there's a vacant school board position open. Someone should apply. Well, I have. Today, I received confirmation that my application is received, and I will be considered among, what I hope, our many applicants on February 8. We would not be here asking you to lend volume to our voices if we thought that action that has benefited and our students and our community is being taken. We are asking you to join us in paying this price in support of human camaraderie. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. And do we have any others that would like to speak on this item? Please either raise your hand in the chat or unmute yourself at this time. Thank you. If you could state your name and address for the record, you will have two minutes to speak, and I will start the timer once you state your name and address.
Am I on?
Uh, yes, you are.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't know. Elizabeth Darkabani, 259 Boeravage Court, DePere, Wisconsin, 54115. And I would like to go off of what Alderman Scanell said. He just mentioned that he's taking on, he doesn't want to take on duties that are not his or ours, in that he doesn't want to take on things that he was not elected for. I was, I'm taking on duties right now that I was not supposed to be doing. I am taking on duties of a teacher that this is not what I should be doing. These children should be in school. There is no reason why these children should not be in school, and we're asking you to help us. Our school board is not listening to us. Our school board, and that's why we're coming to you guys, is because they're not listening. And first, I want to say that I'm here because I want to be the voice of our children, our innocent children that belong in school, that are suffering because of the indecisiveness of our school board. And we do not have a plan. And the plan they're saying now is vaccinate the teachers. I am a teacher, and I will tell you, I personally will not get a vac, I will not get vaccinated. So what are you going to do when the teachers say, I do not want to get vaccinated? Now what? Now you're back to square one. So you need to step up, and you need to say, school board, now what? Because they're not coming up with an answer for our children. There's no plan. And we have some conflicts of interest. You need to look at the school board. You need to look at our mayor. Our mayor, who has a teacher as a wife, and you need to look at our school board, Eric, who's the leader of the school board, conflict of interest, who also has a wife, who he's voting for on the school board, which is a conflict of interest. We need to look into this. And no one is doing that.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Before we move on to the next citizen and their testimony, Attorney Chavez, could you just weigh in on the allegation that was made by that individual? I know that Alder Steyer asked you to take a look at that earlier today.
Yes, Mayor. So as I noted, or I notified the council earlier today, there is no conflict of interest for any of our alderpersons or elected officials, because the council has zero authority over the operations of the school district. There is no direct benefit, financial or otherwise, that is being, there is no benefit from the action being taken one way or another, and that is the requirement before a conflict of interest exists.
Thanks, Attorney Chavez.
I would like to speak if I'm able. My name is Amy Schatz. I live on Point Comfort Lane in Green Bay. I think it, I think it is your business.
Sorry, if you could just stop. I'm sorry, Amy, if you could go ahead now. I'm starting. I'm starting the timer now.
Sure. I think it is your business to make Green Bay a great place to raise a family. I have sent several emails to the school board and the superintendent and have not received responses. I'm not alone. Many parents are waiting on responses, so I thank you for hearing from us today. There are eight children that live on my street. Four of them have already left. They opened and enrolled into a neighboring district that has been open. The remaining four on my street will not be attending a Green Bay public school next year. Through an opens records request, I learned that Green Bay schools have already lost over 1,600 students when compared to last year. Open enrollment just opened today. I warn you, the number of families looking to leave the Green Bay schools will be staggering. How long do you think it will take to reverse this damage to your city? When families leave the district, teachers may lose jobs, home values do not keep up with neighboring cities, employers may have a hard time recruiting to the city, the damage trickles down to small businesses and all the Green Bay citizens. We need to do something about this now. Students need to return now. All other schools in Brown County are open. Green Bay is the only one closed. In fact, Howard Swamco is back to five days a week. I just learned that today from a coworker. Green Bay's current plan allows my son to go back to school way too late. He's only going to get 18 days of instructions in the building. That's not enough. You can help make Green Bay a great place. Please help us open our schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And looking, if there's anyone else who'd like to speak on the topic, if they could either raise their hand in Zoom or unmute yourself at this time.
Hi, my name is Matt Razor. I live on 419 East La Captain Circle.
Thank you, and I'm starting your time now.
Thank you. And thanks for all the alders for diving into this and listening to us. I sent a couple of emails to Mrs. Dax Corpus, Corpus Dax, and she was kind enough to get back to me, and very eloquent responses I got, and I thank her for doing that. I voted for her, my wife voted for her, and she got back to me very quickly. We put three kids through Preble. We're empty nesters now. I went to Preble. My family's from Green Bay, born and raised here. So my wife and I are thinking about kind of the next phase of our life and what do we do with our house. We spent all last year getting it ready and maybe putting it up on the market, downsizing, whatever, but we've enjoyed living in Green Bay for a long, long time. And property values, you know, things like that are a concern to me and my wife. One thing that I wanted to bring up is the mental health part of this. We put three kids through Preble, like I said. They all went on to college. We have, our youngest is at Madison right now. And getting into college, those type of things, the stress that that brings, sadly, about 10 years ago, we lost one of our neighbors to suicide, and just because of the pressure of what that brings. And these kids, you know, when I see our 16-year-old neighbor leave at 3:00 in the morning on a Tuesday night, I wonder, you know, what are these kids doing? What's in their heads? And who's liable for those things when we have a death, maybe, or something like that? So I urge you guys to just give an advisory vote. That's all we're looking for, just on getting your guidance. So thank you.
Thank you. If there are any others who would wish to speak on this item, if you could unmute yourself at this time. Once again, if there are any others who wish to speak on this item, if you could please unmute yourself at this time and state your name for the record.
My name's Thomas Zaharsky. I live at 739 South Irwin Street. I would like to step out and commend everybody for being able to bring a topic to a forum and participate in a democratic process, whether it goes forward, whether it doesn't. Everybody commended in the fact that they're willing to engage the public in a positive and healthy manner, because too many times these topics get redressed in the media, and they're devoid of fact, or they're promulgating fiction. I guess the one thing I would say is, since the 1700s in the United States, communities have had committees on public safety, counseling the general welfare and the ideals of their community so that a collective effort can be made redressing the most prominent issues that occur. And this council has the ability to do that, but also has the privilege not to do it. And so I appreciate both aspects of the argument, and I just want to thank everybody for taking the time and being courteous enough to allow others to speak. And so thank you very much. And then, closing, I would say, it was Harry S. Truman that said, without a strong educational system, democracy is crippled. Knowledge is not only the key to power, it is the citadel of human freedom. And hopefully, the education system and the board will find it in their best interest to help our community adapt to what's going on with COVID-19 in a more rapid way to satisfy the needs of the community. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. If there are any others who would like, wish to speak on this item, if you could please unmute yourself and state your name and address.
I wish to speak.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Regular Joe Giganti, 1420 Bellevue Street, Green Bay, 54311. Let me know when I see the number. Okay. So I guess, listening to this, my first question is, this is a non-binding resolution, so the adamant reaction of Alder Galvin and others, I'm just curious, are they saying for the record that the city council has no opinion on the quality of education in the public school system? Because there's nothing, what is the harm that can come from the city council adding to the voices of their constituents, the people whose tax dollars pay for their salaries, to simply say they have a right to demand the schools are being opened? And when we have checks and balances within our government, I understand the city council doesn't have power over the schools, but certainly, it didn't stop the mayor when he wrote an open letter investigating the sitting president of the United States of Bay. He had no power over that either, but he certainly did it to lend his gravitas to it. So to simply ask that the gravitas of the city council be at it so that the voices of these parents that are obviously being ignored can be heard, it doesn't seem like they're asking a lot, but there's been such a virulent reaction by members of the city council, it's kind of perplexing. I would think, as public servants, they would want to champion public schools and argue for the students' best interests, because it is a ripple effect. It may not be directly under your oversight, but again, one mentioned mental health. We know that when kids aren't getting a proper education and being engaged in school, their physical health suffers, not just from lack of exercise, but proper nutrition. And certainly, without that guidance in education, it affects their behaviors, and we see rises in crime and other things. So I guess my question, really, more than just a statement, is I'd like to understand from these alders that are having such a visceral reaction, what are they afraid of a non-binding resolution? And do they want to officially state for the record that they don't think the city council or members of it should have any opinion whatsoever in support of public education? Because there's a lot of media on this. I'd like to know.
Thank you. If there are any others who would like to speak on this item, if you could please unmute yourself and state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Melissa Stitz. My address is 341 Bay Highlands Drive in Green Bay, and I appreciate you taking the time to listen. I'm suspecting that there are many of you that although you're listening, this is not an easy topic to have conversation around, and it is, you know, the future of Green Bay. As a taxpayer and also a parent of a public school student at Preble, I'm asking that you listen and support the school resolution that Alderman Brunette is bringing forward. And in your mind, it doesn't fall into your lane, but the reality of it is, is the impact of this upon the community is much broader, and many people that spoke previous going to readdress that situation. What I'm here to say is that our school board does not have a plan. They do not have a defined plan to move forward. They have it attached to a vaccination date, which is not set in stone, not scheduled. Meanwhile, other states that have absolutely no vaccination dates set forth are opening, Iowa, Minnesota, Illinois. But somehow, we think and believe that Green Bay is such a special place in terms of size of school that we cannot open, which is inaccurate. We have Appleton, Oshkosh, Wausau, Kenosha, Kekana, all are open for face-to-face. All have been open for face-to-face, but yet, Green Bay is falling behind, and we are seeing that in our enrollment numbers. The most disappointing piece is teachers are not even being listened to. There is a teacher that had sent me a note and had just said, we have a responsibility to our students, our families, and our community, and we are failing them. There has been many physical concerns and health risks addressing in the glaring cry for help. We are letting them drown, and they are pleading for a lifesaver. The unfortunate piece is, is this teacher had sent it to the school board and superintendent, and Rhonda was the only person that responded. That is why we need your help. We need for you to please take a stance and support the resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And if there are any others who wish to speak on this item, if you will please unmute yourself and state your name and address.
Being no other citizens, I would entertain a motion to close the floor.
Floor. Second.
Stevens makes a motion to close the floor, seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The guys have it, the floor is closed. Alder Brunette.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve Brunette's draft resolution in advance to a 16th city council meeting for adoption.
Second.
Sorry, at the beginning of that, could you just repeat yourself?
For me?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, I'll just repeat it, Mayor. Motion to approve Alderman Jesse Brunette's draft resolution in advance to the February 16th city council meeting for adoption.
Okay, that motion has been made by Alder Brunette, seconded by Alder Vanderleest. Any issue with that motion? Chavez, just to make sure that.
We don't have a meeting on February 16th. That's one issue.
Yeah, that was my next question. Thank you for catching that, Alder Dorf. I just thought of that when I said it.
Yep, it is on the 17th, I believe.
Because of the election. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, that is correct.
Can I change it to next full city council meeting, just in case we forbid have some issue?
Yep, no problem. Just on the motion itself, Attorney Chavez, any issue? That sounds good.
It doesn't actually require that it be advanced to the next one. It would automatically, if it passes, it automatically comes back to the next council meeting for adoption.
Right.
So I guess what would be the most appropriate motion if one were in favor of this resolution?
Is that a question for me, Mayor?
No, that would be for.
Okay.
I don't see any issue with the motion to adopt the resolution that's been presented to them. I'm just saying that there's no need to add that additional language. It's automatically going to come back. So if you're worried about when the timing is going to be, you can leave it off, and it'll automatically come back.
Okay. So it's essentially just a motion to endorse this resolution, understanding it'll come back at our next council meeting. So that motion has been made and sent in. Alder Weary, are you still in the queue here?
Sure. I'd be in the queue.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Such a big, you know, important topic. There's more than just what the school board does. I have a son who's in school right now at West. He's a sophomore. In fact, he just walked in the door. They were playing basketball tonight at West versus Peschego. So interesting that they can, you know, spend two hours practicing and playing basketball together with the coaches and everything, but they can't be to school. It is interesting that everybody else in Brown County has been stated, you know, in other big cities, Appleton, Kenosha, and a lot of others around the state and country, can seem to figure it out, but we can't. Are we dumber than them? I don't, I don't think so. I would like to think we're smarter than them. I, for the life of me, can't figure out why we can't figure it out. We're dragging our heels. I just. Oh, Randy, you always interrupt me. Always interrupt me.
Point of order. I can make a point of order at any time.
Ah, yeah, and you always do. And you always do, Randy.
Well, when you're out of order, that's why I make it.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Point of order.
You just don't like what I'm saying. That's why you interrupt.
No, I believe you're out of order. If I'm wrong, then I get voted down. But I believe you are out of order.
Alders, I think we were just complimented by a citizen for having a civil discussion.
I'm not interrupting. Randy is.
I can make a point of order.
Guys.
Always do.
Wow. My point of order is that the honorable alder speaking is referring to us as solving a problem we cannot, or he's referring to another body, which is totally inappropriate because we know nothing about what that body knows and doesn't know, or anything about. That's the whole problem with this, taking on this issue. We're hearing from one group of people.
The point of order is not well-taken. Alder needs to direct his comments to the chair, but with that, we'll proceed. Alder Weary.
All right. Nice try, Randy. Where was I? Do I have to start over again? No, I won't start over again. I was just saying how I think our school board is just as smart as all the other school boards around the nation and the state. There's no reason why we can't get this moving forward. We're here today with the backing of all these parents, I think 60% plus in the survey, who said, get them open, give an option. It's an op, it's not like all or nothing. It's just like, give those who want to be in school an option, and those who really are hesitant, give them an option. It's not all or nothing. You know, some kids might, you know, do different being at school. I know for a fact that some of my friends, my son's classmates, struggle at home, struggle immensely. Some of them are failing multiple classes. It's crazy. Now, my son seems to be okay with it, not perfect, it took a while, but there's others who just cannot catch on with it, and they're going to be behind the eight ball. We're doing them a great disservice. I don't mind calling out the school board for being AWOL and derelict in their duty. I don't mind doing that, and I'm doing it right now. That's my opinion. You don't have to have the same opinion, Alder Scannell. They're AWOL. So I want to say kudos to school board members Andrew Becker and Rhonda Sitnikow, especially Rhonda Sitnikow. She has pushed and asked questions, and she has left us hanging. It's amazing, the support they don't get, the information they don't get. Crazy. I feel bad for her, and I really hope she gets back on. So I hope we support this and just send the message, listen to the people of Green Bay. You aren't listening, so they're coming to us. That's why they're here. They're not listening. They're not listening. Thanks.
Alder Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I know there's been a number of comments shared about the school board, and I want to make sure that what we're talking about, those, the resolution. And there's no content in the resolution that really, you know, casts any type of indictment on the school board or their elected representatives. In fact, I see this action today as quite the opposite, by publicly proclaiming to the board that we have their back, and we support them in finding a way to safely migrate our students to an in-person learning option. These are difficult conversations where both of the sides of the debate are theoretically correct, and I applaud the attention and effort the school board has put into this debate. And I have personally no desire to usurp that expertise or decision-making authority from them. I'm looking to them as an expert on how to achieve this objective. But I do think it's important to note that this is a non-binding resolution. Government entities issue these all the time on a wide variety of topics. And I cannot agree that our government entities are not interrelated and should not be concerned with what the other is doing. Our community depends on the success of each agency, and if our city is impacted by one, we should never give up that voice. So let us start by finding the common ground and recognize the universally held belief that students will perform better when they are back in school. How we get there can certainly be a point of debate, and a point I do believe the school board is better positioned to manage. But if I revert to the universal belief that students and our community are better served with in-person instruction, and that we are currently not in-person, I could firmly argue that this body is within its rights to opine the need to achieve that common goal because of its impact on our community. We have routinely heard that we need to stay in our lane, yet any functional institution diligently works to break down silos. This is not about lanes or silos. It is about building intergovernmental cooperation and breaking down bureaucracies that do not serve the people we represent. We need to communicate to one another, and when something impacts us, resolutions are the way that government bodies do this. This is not the constitutional crisis it's been made out to be, and I promise you the big bad wolf is not going to blow the schoolhouse down. So what's at stake for the city of Green Bay? When families choose not to move to Green Bay because of the quality of the school district, our jurisdiction is impacted. When taxpayers open and enroll their students to another district, our jurisdiction is impacted. When the school district needs to raise taxes, the residents we represent are impacted. Businesses choose not to locate or expand in our community because the workforce is fleeing, our jurisdiction is impacted. There is a level of codependence that will always exist with local governments. And if city government had an opportunity to perform an action that would allow our school district to perform better, I would expect them to tell us. We both benefit when people choose to move into Green Bay because we have exceptional institutions. We have a lot to lose when they do not. Some have argued that we are simply placating angry parents who are not getting the answers they are seeking from the school district. I would argue that we are exercising an immeasurable amount of irresponsibility by not having a crucial conversation around an issue as incredibly detrimental to our community as this. The impact of these decisions does not end in the school board's lane. Are we really going to argue that the school board is above reproach? That they are so superior to our opinion that we cannot possibly contribute to the success of our students and community? What does that say about the residents who contact this body, representatives of the city council, with an expression of opinion or feedback that might allow us to do our jobs more effectively? Are elected officials immune from hearing feedback that might allow us to make more informed decisions? Because that is all we are doing here. We are communicating to the school board that there are negative consequences to our community when we do not have in-person learning options. This is how it affects our community, and how can we help? So there's plenty to debate on the merits of the resolution, and that is where I think the dialogue should rest. The resolution in its draft format is not telling the school board district how to reopen. It is simply requesting that we provide an option to accommodate the families that feel they are not being served virtually. If the resolution were to pass, the school board district is not bound to do anything with it. To me, this is the most basic form of compromise we can offer those parents who feel unheard. The school district gets to continue making their decisions, and the parents feel like they have had an outlet to be heard. I see no harm in this. I do see harm, however, in forever losing our voice as a collective body because we were afraid to exercise an opinion claiming lack of jurisdiction. I would much rather maintain our ability to issue resolutions while possessing the courage to have a crucial conversation. If we claim lack of jurisdiction now, it binds us to that position indefinitely moving forward, which would be entirely inconsistent with how our government body and all others have acted in the past. In a case in point, the school board is taking up a resolution at their next meeting, requesting the state of Wisconsin to maintain the mandatory face-covering mandate. That is the state's jurisdiction, but the school board is still issuing an opinion. You want to stay in our lane, then I will show you 100 different cities that stayed in their lane and did not speak up when it mattered most. We can peer into a crystal ball, and I assure you their challenges are only a glimpse of what can happen to our community when we forego our ability to communicate with courage and conviction. If you want facts and data, there's plenty before us. But come to me in a few years, and I will show you data of what happens to community when silence prevails. We are so worried about what might happen that we are ignoring the problem that is right in front of our noses. To the Green Bay Board of Education, thank you for all you have done to help navigate our students, parents, teachers, and staff through this pandemic. Regardless of the outcome of tonight's vote, please know that we respect the job you are doing. And even if this body is unwilling to pass this resolution, I am firmly in your court, willing to offer support to facilitate solutions for our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Alder, Alder Scannell.
Thank you, Your Honor. There is a civics lesson here. And the civics lesson is several things, but let's begin with the law. We are in the processes. There is room for governmental workings together. The school board, if the school board came to us with an issue that we could help them with, that would be governmental cooperation, working together. Or if we go to them, we have gone to them sometimes to work with buildings. You know, we want to use their buildings for something, or some of their facilities. That's intergovernmental cooperation. This is not that at all. And I know there's a lot of Alders who want to keep saying over and over that one resolution is, you know, we've done resolutions before. They're all the same. They're not. This resolution has to do with operations. And for us to really make an intelligent decision here, we would need to have all the facts. We've heard from one group who wants the schools open yesterday. But there are people out there, I've heard from them, that are, they want the schools open, but they support what the school board, the process the school board is doing. We have no idea what is going on administratively with them. We have no idea why they're not open. For us to be jumping in on this is totally inappropriate. It may, we are assuming their position without having benefit of all the knowledge we need to make an opinion on this. This is very different from anything else we've ever done. You can ignore that as long as you want. I've said it three or four times, and no one's taken it up. It's a fact. This is completely different. And this is not, the laws were set up so that it would keep municipalities. The school difference, the school boards were set up independently so it would keep municipalities from interfering in their business. Is anyone going to Alleyway or Bellevue? There's Green Bay schools there. Why is it us? Because we're big? Well, the law says the school board's here, you municipalities are there. You can work together, but we shouldn't just be jumping in because someone's coming later and aren't happy with what the school board's doing. That is not our job. That is not civics lesson to be learned from this. The civic lesson is we need to respect processes. We need to respect the laws. We need to respect people's jobs to do what they're to do, and our job to do what we're supposed to do. How many times are we going to be taking on an item that is just, I just don't think it's appropriate for us? And that has an effect on us too, on who wants to run to be an alder. I just, the civic lesson here is, yes, we understand this is a pandemic. It's awful in so many ways. And if there was a way we could help the schools, certainly we would help the schools. They need to come to us for something to do if we're going to help them. Our weight, I don't know why people think our weight is so heavy that it has so much power. It doesn't. I mean, there is one point I will agree with Alder Weary in that all the resolutions we've done are pretty much sitting in the wind. You know, we do them, and we don't have much hope that much is going to happen with them. But at least they are policy-related, and the issues direct very much to not the effects on the city, but our jobs. So I don't support this resolution as is. I just think it's very important to me that we follow the processes, that we respect the processes, that we respect the lanes. We are jumping out of our lanes. This is not working with the school board or any other community. And as far as health issues, which there certainly are, the place to go would be the county, not the city. The county deals with health. But this just is not appropriate for us to be dealing with. We're going to be, either we slide over, we start talking about school business without having all the information, or we're just out of our lanes. We're just not, that's it. Thank you.
Alder Galvin.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city does cooperate with the Green Bay Public Schools. Crossing guards, liaison officers, protection details at sporting events and other events, training with the schools. We do garbage, not garbage, but we do plowing, snow removal, parks, the lunch program in the parks. There's a lot of cooperation between the city and the public school system. But at the same time, what is the city doing about this particular issue? I've got several people that have written me emails, and in those emails, they say, "What has the city done to help the schools open up sooner? What has the city done? We fought tooth and nail over masking, and I imagine we're going to fight over it again tonight. Let's see if the people that want to open up the schools, the Alders, that want the schools open are willing to continue the mask mandate for the city of Green Bay, or is that something we don't need? What have we done about distancing, social distancing, public, large groups of people meeting? Some of us have been very dismissive of that. It's everybody's right to get sick, but they want to get sick. People die. That's terrible, but life goes on, and our businesses are failing, and we don't want that to happen. So what has the city done to help with getting the schools open sooner, other than this resolution, which currently, from some people, means nothing, but from what I'm reading, means a lot? Have we done any investigation? I've got a, someone that wrote to me and said, "They're part of that 60% that wants the schools open, but they don't want them open now under the current conditions that are prevalent in Brown County. They don't think it's safe." We've been told in this, all the statistical data on the minorities. Does anybody understand the data about how much more, how many more deaths they have? How much more of the long haulers? Everyone seems to forget about that. We concern ourselves about deaths, but what about the people that are affected by this disease for long term? Upwards of 15%. I don't hear anything about that. Three quarters of the African-American families in this poll that was taken, three quarters, said they would prefer virtual over going back to school and putting their families at risk. I haven't heard anything about that at all. Where's the concern there? I have one person that wrote to me, and what they said was, "Our schools are open for in-person learning for those students most vulnerable in our community and are most in need of this service. Many of these students would be at risk if the schools were open back up. Any concern about those people? What should we tell them? Should we give them the party mantra, "If you're afraid, stay home"? Let the ones that aren't go to school? Is that what we have to tell them? That they should suffer at home? So I mean, it's great to say this thing doesn't mean much, but it does belts the school board. We don't think they're doing a good job. It tells the school board they need to listen to this group of people that want the schools open yesterday. And they just figured it out. Maybe our school board has figured it out. Maybe they figured that it's not as safe. Like Alder Scannell said, we don't have all the information that they have. School bus drivers traditionally are the elderly. What are we supposed to tell them? Pack yourself in with 60 kids in a bus half-hours a day? Hey, and if you don't want to wear a mask, or if the kids don't want to wear a mask, too bad for you. What do we tell the custodians and the other people that work at the schools? Not just the teachers, the ones that are vulnerable? Well, if you're afraid, stay home? I mean, I'm not hearing any answers from us. I just hear a saying that the schools get open yesterday, or you're going to start losing people. You know, we open yesterday, we're losing people. Maybe students, I mean, from what we're hearing statistically, children are rather resilient when they contract COVID. What about their parents, their grandparents, their aunts and uncles? What are we supposed to tell them? I'm not in favor of this resolution as written. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Weary, you're in the queue a couple times here.
I get one for me, one for myself, and one for I, so I get two free.
All right, just five minutes. Go ahead.
Since last year, actually, and these statistics were given to all of us, I believe, almost 1,700 students have left the Green Bay School District. So I think one of the former Alders who spoke mentioned we might lose people. We are. We're bleeding kids. They're leaving in droves. And, you know, does that mean we're going to have less teachers on? I mean, 1,700 kids is a astounding number who have left the school district. It's crazy. So it is having an effect because they're going to other school districts, basically across the street, that are open. So everyone else has figured it out. So I just think there's got to be a way. Like Alder Johnson said, we're encouraging the school board to find a way. We know they can do it. Others have done it. We're encouraging them to find a way. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Brunet.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have some notes here. I'm not working on a script, so I'm just going to work through these, and I'm going to try to be as succinct as possible, given the nature of the conversation. First of all, I'd like to thank Alder Scannell for the civics lesson. Civics was always a favorite class of mine. I actually got an A in civics at Green Bay West High School, right here in the Green Bay Area Public School District. That was 1998 I graduated. It was in-person back then. You know, if I was forced to, you know, take that class at home, I would fall under one of the 64.5% of Green Bay Area Public School students today advantaged. Didn't have a computer, didn't have internet connection. I don't think many people did back then, but at least there was some dial-up connection. And if I, back then, in 1998, as a senior, 22 years ago, or 23 years ago, perhaps, you know, not having the ability to go to school in person, I would be one of the 15,000 failing grades in the Green Bay School District today. This does affect real people in the city. So to kind of back up how I came forward with this idea, I was not asked to do this. The Open Schools Group did not ask me to bring this forward. They did not help me draft this resolution. I personally wrote this resolution in a way that was not critical of the school board or condescending or passing judgment on individual school boards or the entity as a whole. However, how do you bring fruition without stating the current situation that the Green Bay Area Public Schools is putting on parents, students, teachers, and employees in a way justify the resolution? So there seems to be four points. I've heard some Alders, and I have all due respect for all of my fellow Alders, although we disagree, especially at the protection and policy meeting. It was a rough meeting, quite frankly, but I got through it. The thing that most of the Alders are objecting to, or those that are objecting, are four points. They say that it's conjecture. The four are, you know, I state the mission of the Green Bay Area Public School District, and I make four comments. Whereas many, I put many, many parents, students, and teachers of the Green Bay Area Public School District believe the school district is failing to fully meet their stated mission. I was very careful with those words, many and fully, because they are meeting, you know, most of their stated mission, but they're not fully meeting it. Then I went on. Whereas current situations created by a lack of a safe, safe, in-person instruction- instruction option, okay? Lack of a safe, in-person instruction option is directly and negatively impacting the quality of life of Green Bay residents, many of whom are our most vulnerable. That is not conjecture. I believe that to be a true statement. Furthermore, I go, whereas many students with various vulnerabilities are falling behind their peers in other Green Bay Area school districts and independent private schools. Okay, perhaps I didn't add the statistics to prove that point, but it's still a fair comparison. And whereas these current inequitable, we always talk about equity, equity when it's convenient for an argument, but not when it's not convenient for an argument. Whereas these current inequitable conditions will be exasperated in future years, creating a substantial achievement gap for many Green Bay children as compared to the spectacle because of the 100 or 15,000 failing grades in the Green Bay Public right now. So how I came forward with this resolution, this idea, I was invited, as were all of my fellow council members, to a meeting, a rally in front of the school district building in December. And so I heard from parents and teachers, and they were just pouring their hearts out there. And it was hard to hear because my heart went out to them. The students and the parents are talking about their anxiety of their students, the depression, the suicide ideation. I have family members who have students who have autism, coworker who has a son with autism. You know how hard it is to help an autistic child at home without the in-person support of a school district? It is not easy. And I know that because I've had these conversations. Normally, parents get the support from their school district. It helps them, helps cut into their day, helps with different coping techniques and instruction for autistic students. As I said, we have 64.5% of the Green Bay students are economically disadvantaged. 14.8% with a disability, 21.1% are English learners. You know, we are unique as a school district, therefore, the need for in-person instruction for these students is critical. It's critical. It's going to set them behind their peers in outside districts and private schools. I don't know how anyone could not see that or question that or challenge that. It's like we're void of common sense in this and we call it conjecture. Not conjecture, okay? It's, to me, it seems like inconvenient truths. We don't like to hear inconvenient truths in government sometimes, but it's necessary. We hear from the actual students and the parents and the teachers. I already mentioned the failing grades, private schools outside districts. There was an article in Press Times, the local paper here, now covers Green Bay Area politics, and there was an article about our Somali students. The parents and students of Somali refugees are struggling because there's a language gap. And the school district has, you know, has done a lot of really good things, Somali population, to help them, but they're struggling. They need to be in school so they can adapt and adjust to American life and have the same privileges and opportunities as other Green Bay Area students. And that's students and outside of the Green Bay District as well.
We've reached five minutes. So Alder, if you could wrap up your comments.
Okay. How long was Alder Scannell on the clock? Because it seemed like he was going well over five minutes. Were you clocking him? Were you clocking him? Okay, you weren't clocking him.
I make a motion to grant additional time.
That's the...
That is in order. We've done that before. I have done that plenty of times before you.
All I'm saying, Alder, is wrap things up so the other alders have an opportunity.
Why did you time me but not Alder?
Five minutes.
You didn't time him, though. You just said you didn't time him.
No, I have a motion on the floor to grant additional time. Another five minutes.
Proceed, Alder, and bring your comments to a close and we'll move on to the next.
Point of order, Attorney Chavez, is Alder Wery's motion valid?
You can do a motion to extend debate, yes. But that would apply to everybody. So it wouldn't be a unique one where one alder gets additional time. It would be everybody gets additional time.
Fine by me. I'll second that if I can. Is that valid?
I will second it. And if I could add, we could, if the alder would take the five minutes now and then just defer not to speak again or a third time or whatever, I mean, let's give him all the time he needs right now and then he can have less time further on if he wishes to speak again. But he's going through his ordinance and I think it's important that we let him do that.
Well, thank you. Civics lesson, I appreciate that, Alder.
Yeah, well, you know, I used to teach civics.
All right, I know, so.
It's a motion.
Well, Alder Wery made a motion. I second it, so it's up for a vote, I guess.
What does the motion do, Alder Wery?
It grants an additional five minutes.
To each alder.
Well, according to Attorney Chavez, yeah. My motion was just for Alder Burnett, but if the attorney thinks it's for all, even though I can tell you in the past it was individually.
Is there a second for Alder Wery's motion?
Second.
Second by Alder Van Der Leest. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay.
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 The ayes have it.
All right, I'm on the clock, five minutes. Mayor Gennick, I didn't mean to put words in your mouth. I just, the way it seemed was Alder Galvin went longer, or Alder Scannell went longer than the five minutes. Clark County, outside of Las Vegas, in Clark County, Nevada, 18 students took their own lives since the pandemic began. 18 students, 18 living souls took their lives because of their virtual school option not allowing a virtual or in-person option. One was a nine-year-old child, okay? Fact. They then went to in-person and then helped curb the horrible suicide crisis that they were facing. To think that Green Bay students aren't facing that, that suicide ideation, your head's in the sand. I don't have facts and figures to clarify Green Bay, but I happen to work in a profession where we respond to the mental health crisis for our community and mental health care right now is a serious issue. And we need to, we need to understand that within the Green Bay School District, that the teachers and the administration can usually screen out and assist the students and the parents if they're these sorts of situations. They're at home in front of a computer like we are right now. They cannot get the help that they need and they cannot get the interventions that they need. A couple real quick points. The resolution is non-binding, okay? Seems like some of the criticism, especially the public therapy, some of my fellow alders kind of making it sound like this was the most, you know, grievous thing that has ever befallen city government in the history of our time, okay? It's a non-binding resolution. Vote for it or not vote for it, but I'm siding with the parents, the student, the Green Bay School District. I think it's completely appropriate. In December 2018, 2019, we passed a resolution. We outlawed the use of coal tar sealant on Green Bay roads, okay? We outlawed that. We will not allow it anymore with contractors and guys and girls who are doing this sort of work, okay? But then we pass a resolution to basically convince the governor and the legislature, the state government, to ban it across the state. The last line of that resolution is, now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Green Bay urges the governor and state legislature to enact legislation banning the sale and application of coal tar and other high PAH sealants within the state of Wisconsin. So we can pass a resolution to tell the state of Wisconsin legislation, the governor, to dictate what people in Kenosha can do and people in Two Rivers can do and people in Oakley can do, but we can't pass a resolution that's really, really simply, like, it's simple. It's not condescending, it's not any of the horrible things that it's being portrayed as, to tell the Green Bay School District, we support safe, in-person options for our Green Bay students. That's it. Read it again, honestly. Okay, with that, I'm sure I've reached my five minutes or close to it. Thank you. Thank you to the alders for allowing me to say my piece. I appreciate it.
We've got a minute and a half. Alder Dorf.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to explain, I voted no on that last motion, not because I didn't want Alder Burnett to be able to speak, but because I felt that as a council, we certainly could work together well enough that we didn't need a motion for something like that. We should have just been able to agree that people could have extra time to speak. So that is why I voted no on that. I definitely object to the resolution, the words of the resolution. I think maybe I should even start out with some other words. They are pandemic and COVID-19. I thank you, Alder Galvin, for bringing those up. Haven't heard about the pandemic or COVID-19 a whole lot tonight. Have heard that it's because the school board is not opening schools up to children, that they're just, they're just doing this perversely and for no reason. There's a pandemic. People are and have died and are continuing to die. So the school board didn't cause the pandemic. I also wonder how many of my fellow alders have actually reached out and talked individually to school board members? I've done so, to three. I've reached out and spoken to the top administration a number of times. I've asked for data. I've got data. Boy, I got data. They run data for everything. They make their decisions based on science. I very much respect them for it, but it took me some time to do that research, to find that out. One reason I object to the words of the resolution is because I believe it's poorly written because it is based, is unsupported by data. Those are, they're just some ideas that an alder had and thought he'd put those down and, but they're not based on any facts or data that I can find, and I can't put my name on a resolution that's like that. I know that I and another alder tried very hard to propose an amended resolution to the alder. It wasn't accepted. So, okay, now this is what we have, and this is not anything. I object because I am listening to the voice of my constituents. I'm listening to the voices of those that want school open, and I'm listening to the voices of those that don't want school open. And guess what? So is the Board of Education. I remember God answers all prayers, but sometimes he says no. The school board is listening to you. I know they are because I've talked to them and they are listening. They don't agree and they have come up with a plan. And here's another prop. Green Bay, love it. Here we have, Green Bay to bring students back to school, March 29th. Oh, laid out very specifically. April 5th, this is what happened. March 29th, this is what will happen. There's a plan, a well-thought-out plan based on science and data, masking, cleaning, making students, washing their hands, doing their best to hire contact tracers, but unfortunately, they will not be able to social distance. They'll need to give up that little bit of science to bring the kids back. And that's sad, but that's what's going to happen. At least the teachers will be vaccinated and possibly be safer because of that. I know there are 70 classes in session in the Green Bay Area Public Schools. Did you know that? I watch school board meetings. Teachers can go to the school board and they can, they can say, or go to the administration and say, here's my plan, here's why I'd like to bring my biology class back, my chemistry class back. Here's how I plan to keep kids safe. Here's what I plan to do. And they are allowed to do this. 70 are in session. And guess what? Kids with IEPs are going to school, special education, these vulnerable students. They're in school. I had a lady contacting me today because the school was, the road near the school wasn't being plowed. I mean, was under the false impression that school wasn't going on in that school, because that's what people are saying. Guess what? No, it's wrong. They're going to start plowing because school is going on in many of the schools in this district. And very shortly, schools will be open. I support what the school board is doing. I know that they are listening. I know they're not giving everyone the answer they want, but I will not, I will not support a resolution that puts any pressure whatsoever on my fellow locally elected school board. Thank you.
You're Alder. Alder Scannell.
I took my button off because Alder Dorf said just about everything I wanted to say. So really, she said everything I wanted to say. Thank you, Alder Dorf. My words exactly.
Mr. Mayor.
Just fine, ditto. Alder LaFave, go ahead.
Yeah, on this, and you know, it's a good discussion, but the thing is, I do agree with Alder Dorf. She did say exactly what I was going to say at the beginning, is that those alders who think they should be open, go talk to the people on the school board. You know who they are, they're listed. Go talk to them. And then you talk to them, you tell them, oh, feel it should be open and how you can open it. Come on. I think like Alder Dorf mentioned, they know, they know what's going on. You know, in the Chicago School District, they, I just, it was on the news, I think this morning, they had the mayor on and she said they spent $100 million on the schools to open. You know what they did? They retrofitted all the schools with proper ventilation. We didn't do that. We don't have any proper ventilation at some of these schools. My husband taught 28 years out in Howard Swamaco, at Swamaco. He had one little window open in his class. He also told me, he reminded me tonight, they put an addition on one of the buildings and the state came in and they had to tear it down because they did it wrong. The ventilation was really bad. Come on, our schools, some of our schools are old. They're still old, even though they've done some improvements on some of our schools. They're still old buildings that they're using. And we also have, we have classes, we have large classes. If you want to social distance in some of these classes, you're going to have kids going one day in person a week. Is that a solution? Not really. To have the kids going in shifts, that's kind of like, you know, kids need structure. It's hard for them to go one or two days a week in person, and then now they're back on the computers again. So it's not, there's not an easy solution to this. Don't you think the school board members are, they're almost pulling their hair out. They're trying. And it's in the news that Wisconsin has a new variant. It's the one from England, but it won't be long. We'll probably have the one from Africa, which is even worse. It's more transmittable. And to think that kids can't get it and pass it on? Come on, you know better. It's in the news. There are kids who are getting COVID and who are getting, it's a special type, I forgot what it's called, but they're actually dying too, or they're hospitalized a long time. So I mean, it happens. Not just to adults, everybody. I think our hope is when the teachers can be vaccinated, there has to be a waiting period. Yes, it's going to take time. It's going to take time for all of us. We've been in this for a year now. It happened before. It took them two years to go through it. So I feel for the parents, I feel for the kids, I feel for the teachers. Another thing, do you think how many teachers are going to want to go back in their classroom? That's another thing. If you don't have teachers, you're not going to have classes. It takes everybody working together. And I'll say, as a parent, it's your responsibility also to be working with your children. It's not the teachers. The teachers don't do everything. It's involved too. We all have to work together on this. I'm not going to vote for a resolution because this resolution, to me, right away, I thought, it's almost like a slap in the face of the school board. You're telling them, you don't know what you're doing, but we do. We're smarter than you are. No, we're not. We're all struggling on this. So please, let's take our time and let's do it right. And my neighbor, he teaches...
This is Alder Van Der Leest. Whenever you got an opening, I'd like to speak as well. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, yes, Alder. My neighbor, he teaches English as a second language. My neighbor, he teaches English as a second language. It's even hard on the teachers with what's going on now too. He says they're getting to burnout. But I mentioned, well, maybe the school district will come up when we can go back to school, but they're going to have to go in the summer. It's going to be summer teaching to get these kids caught up. We have options. So, okay, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder LaFave. Alder Vanderleest and then Alder Burnett for a second time.
Thank you. I'd just like to make a comment. I'll support the resolution. If you read the resolution, it says to proceed with no recommendation on a draft resolution written by Alder Jesse Burnett titled, "Resolution in Support of Green Bay Area Public School District Students, Parents, Teachers, and Employees in Urging the School Board and Administration to Transition Quickly But Safely Toward an In-Person Option for All Students." That pretty much tells you what, what, what's, what we're asking. We're not asking anything, you know, pretty broad as far as how the newspaper handles it, how the city of Green Bay residents handle it. And, and I'm all in support of letting our residents speak and, and, and let them be heard. And our job is to listen. For communication that we have with, with, with our residents, ourselves, we'll find solutions. You know, you, you talk about healthcare workers. I have a niece that, that's an RN registered nurse. She goes, she works eight hours a day plus. And she's not asking anybody, you know, she's, she's doing her job, basically doing her job. And, and most healthcare workers, that's how they feel. They're doing their job. And, you know, you have to look at many things. And, and what, what this resolution is asking, it's an advisory resolution. And, and it, it's bringing the topic out into the public, how, how people are feeling and how people are struggling. The case of the teachers, the school board, I understand what's going on. This isn't an easy solution, but we're, we're, we're asking with no recommendation to draft a resolution. We're not, we're not, we're not committee. We're, we're, you know, just giving out information and, and, and the school board will do what they, what they feel is right. And, and it sounds like they're going that direction. They're, they're trying to move forward. That's what, that's all the public is asking. They're asking for some support. Be heard. You know, some of them say they haven't been heard. They haven't had phone calls returned or whatever. So I, I feel that, you know, let the public be heard. And if we can be a little, you know, this resolution is, is helpful. So I support it. Thank you.
You, no more than a minute and a half, I promise. This issue unites, or should unite liberals, conservatives, Democrats, Republicans, nonpartisan people. We are starting to understand fully the need for a very healthy and well-funded public school system. The pandemic has highlighted that. Many parents are reaching out in frustration because their children are not being cared for. Us all to unite to say, public school is important. Not just a place for kids to read, write and, you know, do basic things. For a lot of these kids, it's their lifeline. It's their connection to one of the most stable adults and a teacher that they may ever have in their life. We have to acknowledge that. Some of these kids are not in a good home life right now. Okay? The public school system is a lot of times their interventions. I will say too, and this is something I wanted to add, public school, right now there are children in our homes, in our city where the mom and dad are both have to work, have to work to provide for their family. But there are children right now that are being non-supervised in the home while their parents are working. Or perhaps their older sibling is supervising them, trying to get them to sign in and, and learn. Two last points. I wrote this resolution very carefully in a way not to be inflammatory. Now, you can all have your different opinions as whether or not I accomplished that. But two things. The first line, whereas COVID-19 has required all levels of government to implement sensible policies. See, run the public health crisis while still providing quality public services for the betterment of all people. That's not controversial at all. The final line, this points to it being a non-binding running. Be it resolved that the city of Green Bay is in support of Green Bay area public district students, parents, teachers, and employees and urges the Green Bay area public district school board and administration to transition quickly but safely toward an in-person option for all students. I just, I, for the life of me, I can't understand why this isn't just a way for the council to unite behind our parents, students, and employees, the public school system. It can't be that controversial. That's all. Thank you. Alder, Alder Gerlach.
Thank you. And Alder Burnett, I can explain why that is controversial. Because I will say, we have no jurisdiction over the school district. We have no jurisdiction over the school board. But I could support a completely non-judgmental, simple resolution in support of the school district and school board in these difficult times. And so this starts out saying COVID-19 has required all levels of government to implement sensible policies and procedures. But it ends by suggesting that we know what those policies and procedures are, that we urge them to move in a safe, to move safely and quickly toward a completely in-person option. There's nobody who believes any more than I do that children ought to be in school. But that doesn't mean that we know all in-person option is the best solution right now. We're overstepping our bounds by making that suggestion. But in between, from the beginning to the end, I'm sorry, but this is full of condescension. This is full of unfounded negative allegations. I have offered and I always offer to help rewrite something, to make it not so condescending, to make it something I could support. For, to say, whereas many parents, students, and teachers of the Green Bay area public school district believe the school district is failing to fulfill their stated mission. Don't tell me that's not judgmental. And don't tell me if you have no data here that you know how many believe they're failing to meet their mission. When in fact, I'm surprised to say that I got more emails asking me to keep out of the way and not interfere with the school district than emails that told me I should interfere. The next one, whereas many parents, whereas current situations created by a lack of safe in-person instruction option is directly and negatively impacting the quality of life of Green Bay residents. That's a guess. It might be right, but it might not be right. It's a guess. And then to say, whereas many students with various vulnerabilities are falling behind their peers in other Green Bay area school districts and independent private schools. I'm sorry. That's a guess. I don't know if that's true or not. It might be and it might not be. But the fact is, kids are falling behind all over the country. I have five grandchildren in three different states, none of them in Wisconsin. Believe me, all school districts are facing this. And then to say, whereas these current inadequate conditions will be exacerbated in future years. That's a guess. We don't know that. We don't know that. Creating a substantial achievement gap for many Green Bay children as compared to their peers. We don't know. We could take all of that negative stuff out. We could have a simple resolution saying the common council supports you at this difficult time and encourages you to go ahead and make the best decisions possible for our children. And I sign it in a heartbeat. But as, as Alder LaFave says, a slap in the face.
Go. I don't see any other alders in the queue.
Mayor. Mayor.
Stoyer, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it's been a very interesting discussion. Many of you were at the election policy meeting about a week and a half ago. It was very animated, to say the least. I was a little stunned with some of the pushback from some of the folks, considering that I'm looking at this or we're looking at this as a non-binding resolution. One of the things that we talked about was maybe taking the 11 whereas comments and then trimming them down, taking four of them out. And we voted on that as well. And that, that failed two to two. We voted on the 11 whereases. That failed two to two. So I, 10 minutes before council, I wrote a couple of things down. And I realize that we're talking about Alder Burnett's draft resolution as is, but I'm just going to throw this out and if people are fine. So I basically took the last four whereas comments from Alder Burnett's resolution and I changed them into three potential replacements. And the one would be, whereas this resolution is a statement of opinion with some added facts and has no bearing on the workings of the Green Bay area public school district. And whereas from January 10th, 2020 till January 8th, 2021, the Green Bay area public school district lost a total of 1,696 students from the district. And whereas this resolution should be limited to those issues and procedures within the city of Green Bay's jurisdiction, such as possible crime and tax impacts due to the loss of nearly 2,000 students from the Green Bay area public school district. Be it resolved, blah, blah, after that. Now, granted, there, there might be a couple of points there. I'm all about facts and research and that. And, and the first seven items that Alder Burnett brought up, you know, there was a lot of factors in there. I had a little more trouble with the last four because there was a little bit of opinion and conjecture there. But we've heard from many parents who just felt like they were not being heard. You know, we, you got to remember, we're alders. We represent 8,700 constituents. And when citizens have an issue and they come to us, I'm fully aware that we have no jurisdiction over the Green Bay public school district. I'm aware of that. But then again, we, we need to listen to the citizens. So I brought those three points up. I realized that we're talking about the draft resolution as it is. I'd be more than willing to, you know, if we voted to hold it or we deny it, whatever you decide to do, my feeling is that we could take this resolution, tweak it a little bit, and come up with something that would be amenable and still effective for what we want to do tonight. That's where I'm at with that. You want to discuss that? That's fine, but that, that's my two cents for now.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments? Alder Dorf.
Thank you. I did do my research too on those numbers you were kind of tossing out there, Alder Stoyer. And I wonder if you're aware that 604 of those students are pre-kindergarten or kindergarten students? So that's quite a chunk. I, I did get that number from the superintendent. And being the person that had, was in charge of the count every year for the 12 years I was at the district office, I know that every year the September count is always far higher than the January count. January count always goes down. I'm not saying that there haven't been more than, than normal. There probably have been more than normal, but we always lost students between September and January every year. The other thing I'd like to say is that, as I said before, much effort was put into offering an amended resolution, much. And it was turned down. And so I'm not interested in, in working on an amended resolution right now, just that you maybe thought of an hour before, before this meeting started. I worked on a resolu, I worked on an amendment for days, days and hours and hours with another alder, but it was just turned down flat. So I, I don't think that Alder Burnett is interested in any amendments to it. And if we get to that point, well, we could always amend it next week if it does pass. Thank you.
I just wanted to make a comment to that. I, I'm, I'm aware of, you know, I got that information as well. And I understand that the K4 and the K5 programs maybe are not mandatory for students to take. Am I correct in that? Go ahead.
Five K, you have to.
Five K.
Yeah. But not 4K. 4K is not mandatory. Five K.
Like I said, I'm all about trying to get facts and figures as well. So I, I'm not throwing aspersions on either side on this, but like I said, we argued about this at length at P and P. And I did have some reservations on the last four points, I'll be honest with you. But I ended up voting regardless for that. So whatever is decided tonight, you know, if you decide to go, you know, vote on this resolution as, as is, I just wanted to let you know that I tried to make some last second amendments. And I granted that's not always the best thing to do, but I was just trying to come up with some kind of compromise. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I request, make a point of information before we?
Yes, for a second time, Alder Gerlach. Go ahead.
It's just a question. I just want to make sure when we get to a vote that I understand what we're actually voting on. So perhaps at that point, we could ask Attorney Chavez to, or I don't, because of the way it's worded in the agenda, I don't quite understand what we're doing. Okay?
It's essentially just a vote to approve the resolution, but because it's not before us, because the resolution text is not before us, this will send the resolution to our next council meeting for consideration.
And then we reconsider it at that time.
Right. If it is, if it is approved at this meeting, correct?
Thank you.
All right, seeing Alder Galvin. Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, Your Honor, could we call the vote?
Yeah, I, I didn't see anybody else in the queue.
Well, I'm sorry. I, I didn't know. Alder Dax was waiting. Go ahead.
That's all right. Alder Burnett, are you willing to listen to any amendments?
I mean.
I think, I think mainly, like, I want us to come to an agreement. I want us to all get behind a resolution that we can, that we can all stand behind saying that, yes, we support our families who want the return of in-person learning in a safe and quick manner.
Yeah. Mayor, Mayor.
I, I, I want to all see us be able to do that. You know, you and I have already spoken or texted and, you know, and I told you the same thing that I have posted on my Facebook page, that those last four points are hard for me to get behind because I do feel that they're conjecture, their opinion. I could easily, I could say the opposite of each of those points.
Yeah. Mayor, Mayor, may I respond?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Alder. Yeah, Alder Corpus Dax, thank you. I, I mean, I understand, I've heard the word conjecture on those four points. I happen to stand by it, but if it means that it may more likely pass, it's really the first line and the last line are the most critical ones for me. So if you were wanting to make a motion to remove those four, I would, although it's not ideal, I would, I would second that motion.
That would be my motion.
Okay. Can you state that again, Alder Corpus Dax? What's the amendment?
To, well, what's the easiest way to say this?
Clauses, potentially.
To remove clauses eight through 11.
The whereases.
The whereases.
So where, the comment where it says that these, going to fully meet their stated mission and ending with a substantial achievement gap for many Green Bay children.
Yes.
So I second that. I mean, I think it's reasonable. You, you come from a very good place, Alder Corpus Dax. If people are perceiving my opinions as being harsh than, or conjecture, then I, I, I don't entirely agree, but I understand where you're coming from.
Thank you.
So Alder Corpus Dax makes that motion to amend. It's seconded by Alder Burnett. On the, on the amendment, looks like Alder, or Alder Corpus Dax, do you have anything further on the amendment?
No.
Okay. Alder Dorf.
I have a question. So, and then after this amendment, can there be some more amendments? Are, are, how many are we allowed to make more?
There's no limit.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment? Seeing Alder Stoyer.
All right. I, I did bring up, you know, three amendments. I don't know if that, like I said, I would like, I would like another day to sit down and really work on that. But then again, we're, we're voting tonight. You know, was there any credence with anything that I said? Or are we just looking to take out the four, eight through 11?
You, you didn't make a motion, Alder, and it wasn't seconded. So there's a motion to amend.
I'll make a mo, I'll make a motion to consider or to look at the.
Not on the floor first, Alder Stoyer.
We have a motion to consider right now, yeah.
All right. Well, I can wait.
Okay. Any other comments on Alder Corpus? Any other comments on Alder Corpus?
I don't.
See none?
We use the board, Mayor.
Did I hear it? What exactly did he? We're taking out.
Alder Corpus Dax, do you have the resolution in front of you?
I thought I did.
And if so, if you could just read what the resolution would state with the amendments made, that might be helpful.
Just one moment.
I have it if, if you need me to.
Yes, please. Thank you. My computer's slowing down.
Is that okay, Mayor?
Yep. Go ahead, Alder Gerlock.
Okay. Resolution in support of Green Bay area public school district students, parents, teachers and employees in urging the school board and administration to transition quickly but safely toward an in-person option for all students by the common council of the city of Green Bay. Whereas COVID nineteen has required all levels of government to implement sensible policies and procedures to confront the public health crisis while still providing quality public services for the betterment of all people. Whereas the Green Bay area public school district serves students in the city of Green Bay, Village of Aloe, Village of Bellevue, Town of Scott, Parts of Ledgeview, Eaton and Humboldt. Whereas the Green Bay area public school district includes four high schools, two charter schools, four middle schools, three K to eight schools, twenty-four elementary schools, one alternative school and three early childhood schools. Whereas the Green Bay area public school district is responsible for teaching over twenty thousand students, including fourteen point eight percent with disabilities, sixty-four point five percent economically disadvantaged and twenty-one point one percent English learners. Whereas the Green Bay area public school district employs over three thousand five hundred people. Whereas the demographic makeup of the student body of the Green Bay area public school district is forty-three point one percent white, twenty-nine point seven percent Hispanic, nine point one percent black, seven point five percent Asian, three point six percent American Indian, less than one percent Pacific Islander and six point nine percent with two or more of the preceding, whereas the stated mission of the Green Bay area public school district is, quote, "We educate all students to be college, career and community ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world." Be it resolved that the city of Green Bay is in support of Green Bay area public school district students, parents, teachers and employees and urges the Green Bay area public district school board and administration to transition quickly but safely toward an in-person option for all students.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Corpus Dax, did I capture what you're striving to achieve? Okay. Very good. Alder Burnett, is this on the amendment?
Yeah, well, if I could, the amendment I support. I mean, I think, am I okay with other amendments? I, I guess I'd have to, you know, consider each, but I think we spent a lot of time on this. I think it's a fair amendment. It removes the most controversial parts with still, you know, in a way, supporting the, the school district and making these decisions. Any other amendments? It seems like we would be directing or dictating things like gating criteria, vaccinations, things like that. So on this, on this, on this amendment, agenda, this amendment, I'm in complete support. I don't know how much more time we need to spend on it, quite frankly.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Dorf?
Yes, I will be also making some amendments to this, and I believe that Alder Steyer may be as well. So we will probably need to spend more time on this tonight, or we can send this back to committee, whatever you would prefer, Alder Burnett.
Let's do it tonight. I mean.
I think so.
Okay. If there's any comment, further comments, we do have the amendment and a second. There's going to be a request to use the board, so we will do that. And again, this is on the amendment that Alder Corpus Dax has put forth, seconded by Alder Burnett and read very well by Alder Gerlock.
Mayor, mine's still not coming up. I apologize. I vote yes.
Thank you, Alder Steyer. Alder Galvin, please vote.
Oh, yeah, for some reason, nothing came up on my screen. That's a first. Oh, here it is. It just popped up.
Okay, I'm going to display the vote.
And that is successful, eleven to one. So that amendment has been adopted. Discussion on item amended. Alder Burnett?
No, I think Alder Dorf and Steyer wanted to make further amendments. I'm fine.
Okay. I have two. I would like to add at, at the very last, whereas, whereas the Green Bay area public school district has developed and decided a plan offering in-person learning as an option for students beginning on March twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one, then I'd like to change that therefore be it resolved to, therefore be it resolved that the common council of Green Bay is in support of the Green Bay area public school district as it prepares to offer a safe in-person option of learning for students.
Okay. Thank you, Alder. Is there a second?
I second that.
Seconded by Alder Gerlock. Discussion on the amendment. Comments, Alder Dorf? Alder Burnett?
Yeah, I'm against that motion. And we, we were saying we don't want to direct the school board on what to do, but now we are. You know what I'm saying? Like, just, let's end this. It's just a pretty simple, non-judgmental resolution, but when we start adding March twenty-ninth and all these dates, it's exactly what we are saying we don't want to be doing, and that is directing the specifics to the school board. I get it. We don't want to ruffle feathers in the school board and we want everything to kind of be, you know, nice and, you know, but let's be real. And we don't need to cut and dice this, dice this anyways. I respect Alder Dorf. I just disagree with, with that, that amendment. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also think that this change really alters the, the resolution entirely. Instead of, you know, trying to light a fire and say, hey, let's get this in person as another option in addition to the online, it, it's saying, well, whatever you're doing is fine. And that's, that wasn't the purpose of what we're trying to do tonight. It's, it's trying to say, hey, we appreciate you taking on this tough task, but come on, let's, let's get this in person going sooner. And, and the, you know, the addition doesn't do the that, hey, whatever you're doing, just keep doing it. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Dorf?
Yeah, I just need to possibly reread this for Alder Burnett because I'm not telling them what to do. I'm saying that whereas the Green Bay area public school district has developed and disseminated a plan offering in-person learning as an option for students beginning on March twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one. I'm just stunned. I'm not giving them a deadline. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scannell?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to comment on one of Alder. The purpose of this is to light a fire. That's the very reason I would not support any. If that's what we're trying to do, I think that's terribly wrong. That is a criticism. That is a slap in the face, saying we need to light a fire under them. I just I, I would support amendment. I mean, I, Alder Dorf and I worked on amendments that we ran by Alder Burnett and, you know, I, I too, as Alder Corpus Dax said, you know, it would be great if we could all come together and come up with something and perhaps just removing the four and maybe adding this or whatever does it. I, I do feel for those parents who are suffering and, and feeling the need to reach out to us. But I, I, I want to be very cautious in that we're not overstepping that, moving into an area that we'd have to be taking in more than we should because we're not hearing from the parents that support the school. We're not hearing from the school board that's been asked again and again, why haven't the school board figured this out? Well, we don't know. I'm sure they've got an answer for that, but we're assuming that they don't. And we have to light a fire under them. I think that's just the whole, that's my biggest problem with going forward with this in a nutshell. So if we can figure out a way to make a nice resolution that would support parents who are suffering, if this would help them through this terrible pandemic, I would be all for that. But I want to be very, very, very cautious that we are not lighting a fire under the school board, that we are not slapping them in the face in any size, shape or form with an intimation that they're not doing their job. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any further comments on?
I just, could I give credit to Alder Scannell? Alder Scannell is responsible for most of these amendments and I worked with him on them and I do want to give him credit for this. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. So we do have an amendment offered by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Gerlock. Seeing no other or further requests to speak.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Alder Corpus Dax.
Thank you. I'm happy with the, with the amended resolution that we have now. I appreciate the, the suggestions by Alder Scannell and Alder Dorf, but I think right now the simpler, the better. So I'm, I'm gonna, I won't be supporting the, the amendment.
Mr. Mayor?
Alder Gerlock, yes, go ahead.
And, and I want to say that I feel exactly the opposite. I was, I was happy we were moving forward with the First Amendment, but we needed to add that part that Alder Dorf just added, and that is two parts. One is that the school board has a plan and we acknowledge that they have a plan. And the second part is taking out any description at the end of what we think they ought to do. That's why I believe what she has added simply makes it that much better and I can support it with those, with, you know, taking out what, what you took out, Alder Corpus Dax, and adding what Alder Dorf put in. Maybe we need to have her read it the way it would now be. I don't know.
All right. Thank you, Alder. Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't support the inclusion of a date in particular. And the reason I don't is because the district, from what I understand, made that plan, that March twenty-ninth date, based on a tentative date that DHS had given them. It was tentative. There's no guarantee. And from the, and, and I too had reached out to several members of the board and had conversations with them, which I wanted to point out that their collective reaction was meh, if we send this resolution to them. So I don't think it's the earth-shattering thing we're making it out to be. But, but they had collectively also told me that this plan is not set in stone and that it could move. And so I think by us including a date in this, we're actually, to Alder Burnett's point, doing exactly what we have been saying that we don't want to do, which is to tell them how to do it. And I, and I think by including the date, we're doing just that.
I'll, I'll take that date out. It's very easy to take the date out. I'll just keep the rest of, of that sentence in there and, and with the word in, in-person learning as an option for students. Take out the date. No problem.
Alder Dorf, would, if, if you would please just appease the remainder of council, could you, because you did reread the as clause? Could you reread how you reworded the be it resolved?
Sure. Therefore be it resolved that the common council of Green Bay is in support of the Green Bay area public school district as it prepares to offer a safe in-person option of learning for students.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Further comments? Alder Dorf, or were you done?
No, not unless there's more questions.
Okay. We do have a few people in the queue, still have their buttons pushed. Alder Weary or Alder Scannell?
No.
Okay. All right. Seeing no further comments, we will move to the vote. Would you all like to use the board?
Yes.
Use the board.
We will do that. And again, this is on.
If I, if I could, Mr. Mayor, if I could, under the be it resolved, is, is the original wording still there or was it changed? Was it added wording or replacing?
Replacing.
Okay. So there's no longer the urge the Green Bay Public School District to transition quickly? That is gone?
Right.
Okay. Yeah. Then I definitely.
It says as it prepares to do it.
Yeah, then I definitely can't support it.
All right.
Mayor?
Yeah, it's not coming up. This is on the amendment, correct?
The amendment that is offered by Alder Dorf.
Okay. I'm going with what Alder Corpus Dax said, so I will say no.
One, two, three. I'm having a little trouble. Let's see. That amendment succeeds seven, five? Is that what everyone else is seeing?
Yep.
So we do have another amendment that's been adopted. Further discussion on, I'm as amended. Alder Scannell?
No, I don't, I don't have my button pushed away.
Why?
Sorry.
Okay.
Three times.
There isn't any further discussion, we could move to a vote here? So I will take.
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion or I'll, I'd like to make a comment.
Alder Weary, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I think the original intent of the resolution has now been watered down and pretty much removed. Now it's, there's really not much there at all, so. I can't support it. You know, good job, way to water it down, so it means nothing unless I'm reading it wrong, but. That's all I have.
Thanks, Alder.
Mr. Mayor?
Alder Gerlock?
I, I would just like to respond. I know I have to talk to you, but I'm really responding to what Alder Weary said. I would like you to not think of it as watered down as what we've done is we have made it appropriate because we don't have the right to urge them to do anything, but we support them in their efforts and we encourage, we're encouraging them to move in the right direction.
Thank you, Alder. Any further comments on the item as amended?
Mayor?
Yes, Alder Burnett?
Yeah, I mean, I think we can split the difference here, the Alder Weary, the, the urging is right there in the name of the resolution still. So, so the resolution is, is in support of Green Bay area public school district students, parents, teachers and employees and urging the school board and administration to transition quickly but safely toward an in-person option for all students. There's not a motion to change the title of the resolution. By voting yes on the resolution as amended, this basically gets it, gets to the next council meeting on the sixth, on the seventeenth. So I would make a motion to support the resolution as titled and as amended to be voted on, on the next council meeting.
Okay.
Reasonable, right?
Motion made to support the item as amended, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax, I believe. Are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
All right. Adopted unanimously. All right. Onto item five. What are his wishes?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that. I just, I'll, I'll second it.
Okay. Motion has been made to approve the item. It's received and placed on file, but to approve the item seconded by Alder Burnett. It was pulled by Alder Burnett. Go ahead.
Yeah, just a question for the attorney. By the way, welcome back, Attorney Chavez. Deputy Attorney Bongart mentioned at the Protection Policy Committee that since October, there were seventy-one records, open records requests. There are twenty-seven that had not yet been fulfilled. fulfilled, and then 17 received last week. Do you have an update on that?
I do not. Attorney Bongart handles all of our records requests, as does Deanna Driller, who assists in our department.
Is there a way that you could send an email? Okay, so when I asked for the open records request, I wasn't asking for the content of the open records request. I was more looking at, hey, what sort of open records requests have we been receiving? Is there a way you could send that information to the full city council, or should I refer it back to the Protection Policy Committee?
Well, okay, I guess the question is, are you asking, like, as a, so normally that would be a records request, because we don't usually try to paraphrase what people have asked for, because then we get it wrong. And so usually when we get requests of this nature, we just treat it as an open records request and provide that information through that avenue. And so if you're wanting us to go back and kind of paraphrase what we get, keep in mind that a lot of these are substantial ones, and we will get requests with multiple items being requested within a single one.
Right. As she explained that, this is the issue I have. It's like, for me as a council member, to have an idea of what sort of open records requests have been requested but not yet fulfilled, I, as a council member, one of 12, need to submit an open records request to get that information. Like, that's what I struggle with. I shouldn't have to, in my opinion. I shouldn't have to submit an open records request as one of 12 city council members to know what sort of open records requests we have received and why they haven't been fulfilled yet. Can I, should I just refer that back?
The reason things haven't been fulfilled is only because it's a matter of how much time is required to process them. But as far as providing you with, there's no issue with us providing that information to you. That's not the issue. I mean, it's just we process it as a records request. It's not saying that you can't have the information or anything like that. It's literally, we just process it as a records request so that we know what information to provide to you.
As a council member, if I just submit a request in an email saying, since October '71, '27, blah, 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 just please give me an update, your office will supply that information to me?
Say that again.
If I send out an email stating what I would like to have, and that is not the content of the open records request, just simply what is being requested, if I submit that and say, okay, please process my request so I know what types of open records requests are out there, you'll be able to provide that?
I'm struggling with your request, because, as I stated, what you're asking for, yes, we can give you an explanation of what kind of request, of what requests we've had come in. But again, so that we aren't paraphrasing for people, we're not giving that information. What we do is we just provide you with a copy of the requests themselves.
Oh, okay. Well, that's exactly what I was wanting. I mean, that's, so Attorney Bongart, maybe I misunderstood her, maybe she didn't explain it right. I don't know. But I just want to know the terms, the wording of the open records request. Like, I'm looking at one from the Press Gazette on December 2nd. Like, I have received that from the city attorney's office, and I'm just saying, for all 71, I'd like to know what is being requested of the city government. So.
Yeah. Can we submit that to us? We just process it like we would with the records request, so you're getting the exact copy of everything, rather than us trying to paraphrase for you what it is that people are asking for.
I appreciate that. For me, the way that it looks to the public, that a council member has to submit an open, I'm glad I clarified that. So I'm fine with the receiving, placing, file. I'll deal with staff directly on my request. Thank you.
So there's been a motion and a second. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it. The item has been received and placed on file. On to granting operator licenses.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Alder Corpus Dax, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any names here to be recorded as abstaining? Any names to be handled separately? All right, hearing none. All in favor of the report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it. The report has been approved. On to Plan Commission.
Move to approve.
Second.
Made by Alder Corpus Dax, seconded by Alder Scannell to approve Report N, which is the report of the Plan Commission from the meeting on January 21, 2021. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. No, Mayor?
Yes, Alder Stoyer.
I'd like some clarification on number one, though I'd like to pull.
Yeah, there's only one, so go ahead.
Yeah, so I'd like to pull. So, am I ready? All right, I'd like, I don't know if our new director is in. Chuck Schulte, is he here? Did I pronounce that right? Or Cheryl Rainer-Wig, either one. I have some questions.
Sure, why don't you state your questions, and then we'll go to.
Right.
In a moment.
Okay, well, now that the cup has been pulled on this, I just want to know what the status of this property is now, moving forward. You know, there's still some questions about, you know, what is being delivered or to their, you know, automobiles, et cetera, salvage. But I would like to get the clarification on that. You know, there were 21 citizens in my district that testified or put in concerns of this. So I just want to know where we're at. You know, I know the cup has been pulled. All seven items are now going through on the conditionally used permit. So I just wanted to know where we're at with this right now, and if we're satisfied with what is prevailed at this time.
All right, very well. Can somebody from Community and Economic Development weigh in on that?
Would you like me to handle that, Director Steck Schulte?
I would appreciate that one, since I was not actually here for that one. So, thank you. Thank you.
So Alder Stoyer, that item was pulled, which means that basically they run the operations the way they legally can run them now. They can run the material recovery, but they're not allowed to have autos or retail operations there. So basically, they're set up to run the way they're permitted to run it right now. We're going to watch them with their uses and monitor that going forward, based on the information we heard at the Plan Commission meeting. So, but otherwise, it's pretty much status quo right now.
That's all I needed. I just wanted an update, and I just wanted to let the citizens know that we're looking at this, and that the Inspection Department will be taking a look at that. So we'll stay in touch. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Correct.
Great. Thanks, Alder. We do have a motion and a second to adopt the report. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it. The report has been adopted. Personnel Committee.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Corpus Dax, seconded by Alder Scannell to approve Report O, which is the report of the Personnel Committee from the meeting on January 26, 2021. Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none. All in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Naye. The ayes have it. The report has been approved. Public Arts.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Alder Corpus Dax to approve Report Q, which is the report of the Public Arts Commission from the meeting on January 27, 2021. Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none. All in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it. The report has been approved. TB&amp;P.
Motion to approve.
Second.
To approve made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax on Report Q, which is the report of the Traffic Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission from the meeting on January 18, 2021. Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none. All in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Naye. The ayes have it. Sustainability.
Motion to approve.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion made.
Excuse me, Mayor. I'm sorry. Could you slow down?
Yeah, sorry.
While we're slowing down, may I say, Mr. Mayor, that I agree with Alder Vanderlees. I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. I'll speak louder. It's not the best laptop in the world.
Okay.
So, forgive me. We are now on to the Sustainability Commission, and who moved and seconded that?
Yes, so we had a motion by Alder Corpus Dax, seconded by Alder to approve.
Alder, I'm sorry, who?
Dorff.
Dorff, thank you. Okay.
Yeah, so that was Alder Corpus Dax and seconded by Alder Dorff.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so that's to approve R, which is the report of the Sustainability Commission on January 20, 2021. Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none. All in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it. The item has been approved. On to Committee of the Whole.
Point of order.
Yes.
And I don't know if this is allowed at this time in the meeting, but I know there are people here probably to speak on number two of the Committee of the Whole, and so is it allowed at this time to reorder the agenda, or did that shift sail when we didn't do it originally?
Suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Gerlach, and the purpose of that suspension is to reverse the order of S1 and S2?
Yes.
All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it. We are on S2, and we will return to S1 after we've dispensed with this item. So we're on the item that states, "For consideration with possible action on General Ordinance 03-21, amending General Ordinance 41-20 relating to required face coverings."
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Dorff. Just give me a minute. I'm going to the appropriate page here. We don't have any speakers in the queue. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, Alder Burnett?
I don't really follow politics on the state and federal level, perhaps as I should, but is there any update on what the State Assembly decided or has decided?
Decided anything.
Yeah, I am no expert, but from what I have seen, and others can feel free to chime in and correct me, I don't think any floor period has been scheduled on the face covering requirement. But Speaker Boss has stated publicly that it's his intention to bring the Assembly back and to remove that requirement across the state of Wisconsin.
Can I make a motion, an amendment? I'd like to make an amendment to extend to February 17th and direct the Health Department of the Brown County Government for direction on an ordinance for the entire county in coordination with the Brown County Health Department.
So, I'm not sure if that, so you want to amend the ordinance to state that?
Yeah, amend the, you have the extension to March 31st. And what I'd like to do is amend that date to February 17th, which is essentially our next meeting. And because I think that the Brown County Health Department needs to provide direction to the rest of the county, because, you know, Green Bay will have our ordinance, the pier will likely have theirs, and a whole patchwork of other municipalities is going to have an ordinance, most likely.
Mm-hmm.
So basically, a motion to amend the date from March 31st to February 17th and refer this issue to the Brown County Health Department for guidance on a countywide policy.
Second.
Okay, motion, I'm struggling to figure out how that's an amendment, I guess, to the, so Attorney Chavez, if you could enlighten us at all. I could be missing something.
I would consider it an amendment to extend, I would, I consider them two items. One would be to change the date, the effective or the termination date, the sunset date. And then a second item would be to request that the county provide direction.
Okay, and that will be included in the wording of the ordinance?
Oh, I see what you're saying. No, Attorney Chavez, that's not my intent. It shouldn't be in the ordinance, but maybe a separate motion, perhaps?
So one is to amend the ordinance, which would be to change the sunset date, and then a completely separate item would be asking the County Health Department to provide guidance. So, correct. Only one item that you brought up, which is the date, would actually change the ordinance. The rest would not appropriate for an ordinance amendment.
Right. Okay, so the motion would be to change the date from March?
Yep, go ahead, Alder.
A motion to change the date from March 31st to February 17th.
Okay, is an amendment made. Is that still seconded by Alder Weary?
Yep, yes.
Okay, it looks like Alder Dorff on the amendment.
Thank you. Yes, I would very, very much oppose this amendment. We've been talking about schools going back to in-person instruction. We don't need to join, we need to have a laser-like focus on the city of Green Bay. That's all that we really can control. I've talked to county board members. They have no interest in bringing forward a face-covering motion, the ones that I have talked to. We can do this for the city of Green Bay. We should do it. We shouldn't keep playing with the date. What does it hurt if it goes to March 31st, and then it gets extended by the county or the state? I would be very much against changing this to the 17th. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Johnson, and then Alder LaFave.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm actually not as hung up on the date. When I look at sort of the original version of this that was proposed, and I, along with several others I know, had opposed the original ordinance back in July, was that? You know, and there were three primary things that I had objection to. One was the ability for administrative that held a license with the city, because I felt that there was inequity with that, because not every business held a license with the city. And at our last, I think it was our last meeting, perhaps the one before, the mayor had cast a tie-breaking vote on that to eliminate that provision. The other item that was of concern to me at the time was the $200 trespassing citation. That has since been reduced to a $10 municipal citation. So I felt that that was an important step forward in compromise, because what we were doing was ensuring that those who did not have means, we were not sort of passing a regressive, you know, penalty against those who are socio-economically disadvantaged. And then the last piece that I was, amendment that I had proposed, was if a higher government imposed a mask mandate, that that would supersede ours. So whether that was county, state, or federal. And of course, the state had passed their mandate, so it rendered ours kind of, we'll call it, you know, second in the queue, right, if the state were to peel back. So the date doesn't really concern me. The state's going to take their action. Alder Burnett, I get your point. I agree. Like, I think the county should take this up, because I think that there is a danger of having a patchwork of policies throughout such a closely knit community. And I'm going to tread lightly on this, because I don't want anyone to get shocked, but maybe we should pass a resolution asking the county health department to take this up. So if there was a way to achieve both of those things, Alder Burnett, to me, it would be make an amendment on the date. We can let that, you know, stand, sort of fail or pass, as you propose it. That's up to you. But I would almost recommend a communication then to the appropriate committee that could draft a resolution asking the county to take action on it. I do think that's within our jurisdiction to ask them to do that. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder LaFave?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There's a problem here. You want to pass it on to county, which I wish the county would do something, but I'm going to tell you, they're not going to. I don't know if you're aware that there are four or five who tend the county board meetings, even though the mask mandate is still in place, do not wear their masks. So we, the county board voted to go in person quite a while ago. The majority of them voted for it. They didn't feel there was any problem at all with what's going on. And they also tried to pass an ordinance that would pretty much eviscerate the county health department to do anything about this pandemic. So don't expect them to do anything. So, I'm sorry to say.
So, I'm sorry to say, it's not going to pass at the county. Unless you want to really go after some of these people that are on the county board, but you're not, I don't think you're going to get anywhere, because they just, they don't think it's a big deal. I'm sorry to say it. I do. I have not attended in person. Well, no, I should say I did, but I was up way three floors up in one of the boxes. I wasn't really attending the meetings, but anyway. I think the city's got to take a lead. Masks are very important. In fact, now, I'm wearing the one that you see the doctors wear, not the M9191 or whatever it's called, the blue one, I wear that, and I wear a cloth one over it, because now Dr. Vouchy and others are saying, because the new variants are so, so virulent, that we have to actually, you should wear something else over top. So, I think a mask mandate is needed, and I'd like to see it extended to the end of March, because by the end of March, as we get our vaccinations, more and more people are going to be vaccinated, and there'll be more protection. But we still will have to wear a mask for quite a while after, for weeks after that. So, I'm not for passing this on to the county. Because I personally think that's not going to go anywhere. Sorry, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Galvin.
I'm sorry, Your Honor, I thought I hit my withdraw button, Alder Johnson covered my concerns, thank you.
Great. Alder Gerlach.
I just, I wanted to say that I see the wisdom in what Alder Burnett has proposed, and I, I mean, working together makes beautiful sense. And then I heard Alder Dorf remind us that we are going, urging people to go back to school in person. So I just, I put those two together, and I just want to make sure that everyone knows, because I don't know what emails you got and what emails you read, but I would say, I can't say for sure, but pretty darn close to every single email I received from a school, a Green Bay school parent, who asked me to please not interfere with the school board plan, I believe every single one of them also said, please keep the mask mandate in place, because that will help keep our parents and our children and teachers safe. So I do think we have to keep both of those things in mind now.
Thanks, Alder. Any further comments on?
Real quick.
Yeah, Alder Burnett.
Yeah, I mean, I, personally, I wear a mask at work, I wear a mask, and when I go to the stores, I wear a mask, and always, I think I see most people wear masks in public places, my concern, really, and why I said the February 17th is we're extending this to March 31st, and we instituted that face covering ordinance in July, so a lot of time has lapsed, so, you know, a review from the Brown County Health Department as to any recommended changes to the ordinance or to encourage other municipalities to adopt similar ordinances if they so desire. So, not necessarily looking for the county government to bring forth a resolution that they vote, or an ordinance they vote on, but just for consistency across our entire community. I have a district where Hobart, Howard, Ashwabanon are all on my district borders. I'm on the Oneida Reservation, and I believe they have a face covering ordinance, so there is a danger in having way too many, you know, patchworks of ordinances, so, I don't know, February 17th, to me, just seems like we extend it, we allow the school board a little leeway and cover to put kids back in school as we pass a resolution to do. So, I'm in support of the 17th, if anything, I like the Brown County Health Department, who has jurisdictional health issues, to, you know, to basically advise us on our ordinance, it's been a long time since we passed that, seven months ago. I support my motion.
Thanks, Alder, so we do have just the amendment to change the date from March 31st to February 17th, is the amendment that is being now. Any further comments?
Oh, you got my button pushed.
Alder Scanell, go ahead.
Thanks, just, I don't support the amendment, I don't know why we can't extend it out to March. Certainly the Health Department can pipe in anytime, and we can pull this and do whatever we want at any time, and I just see no reason why not to just let it go through March, so I, I don't support the amendment, but I do support wholeheartedly the county stepping up and putting a, you know, all of us together in one basket, and we're all on the same playing field, but if it doesn't happen, I'd rather we just went to March, thanks.
Alder. Further comments, all in favor of the amendment will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay.
No. The nays are successful, was there a request to use the board?
Yeah, let's use the board.
Okay, we will use the board. So an aye vote changes the date from March 31st to February 17th.
Just give me a moment. Okay, there's your vote.
And that amendment fails eight to four. Further comments? Maybe, I'll go back to Alder Burnett, I think Alder Johnson suggested a communication on urging the county how best to handle that, is that how you maybe like to handle it, or?
Well, you know, I don't know, we can let that one go for now, it just seems like it's going to pass, so I'm comfortable without making a further motion.
Okay. Thanks, Alder. Any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay?
No.
The ayes have it, S2 is approved. Onto S1, consideration with possible action to review determination related to an employee complaint. The appropriate action is to close session here.
Make a motion to move into closed session.
Second.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, just one sec, the motion was made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf. Comments from Alders, beginning with Alder Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. The information given to us by Director Falls, I have no issues and no questions about what took place, and I'm comfortable with a motion of the receiving place on file.
Second.
A motion has been made to receive and place on file.
Don't we have to deal with the first motion first, Your Honor?
I'm not sure which one takes precedent, Attorney Chavez?
I would consider them both main motions, so I would say you should either withdraw it if you're going to, to avoid the situation we had last time where we were worried about waiving the privilege. I wouldn't vote down a motion to go into closed session, I would withdraw and see if you're going to do the second one, otherwise you should just vote to go into closed session.
Okay.
I'll withdraw my second to the going into closed session.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay, so before us is a motion to receive and place on file, made by Alder Galvin, seconded by Alder Dorf. Discussion on that.
Yep.
Alder Weary, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we should go into closed session, because we just received, you know, the email a couple hours ago, and, you know, this is a serious complaint about somebody in the city, or multiple people, and we aren't even going to discuss it, we're just going to read the report and go on our way, I think we should have a chance to ask some questions, just flesh it out and really, otherwise, how are we going to ask the question, by email, everybody individually is going to email their questions, that doesn't seem right. But I think we should just go in closed session, I don't think it's taken wrong, I think it deserves that attention, thanks.
Alder, further comments?
Yeah. Mayor, yeah, I agree, I mean, I knew that it was coming based on court calls, but I it is necessary to go in closed session to discuss it.
Thanks, Alder, any others? All right, all in favor of?
No, I'm sorry, I can't get on the board right now, it won't let me in.
It wasn't pushed in, I'm waving.
Yeah, it won't work.
I'll get you, relax. We have Alder Galvin, Alder Dorf, and then Alder Scanell.
And I want five minutes.
Thank you, Your Honor, and just one comment, this wasn't a complaint. Well, so, thank you very much.
Thanks, Alder. I think it was Alder Dorf next.
Am I? Thank you, yes, I, you know, typically know that on the day of a council meeting, you know, I'm pretty on top of my emails, and I read it, and it was clear, clear as crystal as to exactly what happened, and I have no other questions, and I think receiving and place on files is a very appropriate motion to make at this time, I don't feel any need to go into closed session. Individual Alders may have questions, they could certainly go to the HR director or to legal if they have questions, but I don't think we all need to be going into closed session, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scanell.
Yeah, I have no questions or problems, but I do believe we should go into closed session, if any Alder, just one, has a question, I think this is the time to take care of it, it's on the agenda for that purpose. So, I support going into closed session if there are any Alders that want to do so, so, I don't have an issue, I don't have any problems. But I do support going into closed session.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Steyer.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess, I'm also willing to go into closed session as well, and I guess one of my complaints is, and I maybe we can't avoid it, but it was mentioned that we got this 15 minutes to maybe a half hour before the meeting. I read it too, and it does make sense, but I think some of us might have questions, and I really wish that we could get this information like this earlier, whatever that takes, even a day. You know, it's just, you know, we got enough on our plates, and we get this stuff 15 minutes beforehand, and we're supposed to make wise decisions, I think it's important that we have a little bit more time on this issue and other issues as well, so that's my, I'm off my soapbox, but I'd say open the floor, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate the comments, just to clarify, Director Falls did send an email at 1:00.
Thank you, Mayor.
Would you use the board, Mayor?
Yep, we just have a few speakers here, so Alder LaFave.
Oops, sorry, no, I withdraw, thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor, I absolutely support going into closed session, if there is, you know, even just one question that needs to be asked, now is the time to do it. If we, if we take an action on this item, it's too late at that point to have questions answered and information that could perhaps influence the motion that's made and the outcome that it has, so, I don't know what questions anybody might have, but if somebody has questions, and it appears that a few people did, I don't know how we can in good conscience and good faith take, take an action on something with outstanding information or questions that need to be answered. So I fully support going into closed session.
Your Honor. Your Honor?
Yep, Alder Galvin, go ahead.
I'm sorry, but good arguments here, I'll withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
A lot of withdrawals, okay, Alder Scanell?
I make a motion to go into closed session.
I second it.
Motion to move into closed session made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Gerlach, does somebody have the language in front of them?
I do.
Never read it.
Oh, you do it, Alder Gerlach. You're unmuted, Alder Gerlach.
You did Alder Gerlach.
You know how good I am at this? The common counsel may convene in closed session pursuant to Section 19.85, Section 1C, for the purpose of considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and pursuant to Section 19.85, Section 1G, Wisconsin statutes, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the obligation in which it is or is likely to become involved. The common counsel will therefore reconvene in open session pursuant to Section 19.85, Section 2, Wisconsin statutes, to take action on items discussed in closed session if appropriate, and to consider the remainder of the agenda.
Very good, so we will use the board, but just so counsel knows and the public knows, I'm going to absent myself from closed session to avoid any appearance of conflict or bias, so we will use the board.
Alder Stevens?
Having issues, but yes.
Okay, all right. That passes unanimously?
And counsel will move into closed session.
So, thank you, Mayor, before we do this, I just want to alert everyone that we are getting used to our protocols here. Deputy Fugie is going to put everyone into closed, push everyone out into the waiting room, except for the people who need to be in the closed session, please do not start speaking until I text Joe Falls to let you all know that you are not being recorded, so just give us a few minutes, thank you.
Can we have a two-minute break, or is that asking too much? I'm older, you know?
It's going to take a while, so you could probably do what you need to do.
Yeah, well, I'm running this part of the meeting, Alder, start, no bathroom break for you. Stay here, please.
I think, Mayor Gennar, I think we have to hold off a little bit here until cell steam's all off.
Sounds good, sorry.
That's okay.
Little eager to get back to it.
Did you read Warren Peace?
All right, good evening, everybody, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so if you would just, um, did you press record? Yes, I think so, hold on a second. Okay, all right, Mayor, you may bring the meeting back to order.
I will entertain a motion to return to open session.
Motion to return to open session.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Vanderly, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? The ayes have it, we are back in session.
I'd like to move to receive and place on file.
Second.
Alder Dorf makes a motion to receive and place on file, that's seconded by Alder Steyer, any discussion? Just trying to get my screen back up, apologies. Alder Galvin?
Yes.
Do you have your button pushed?
It doesn't indicate it here, but.
Okay, it's showing up here, but no, no problem.
Just.
Okay, seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay? The ayes have it, item has been received and placed on file. Onto resolutions.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion has been made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf, to suspend the rules and take up items 1 through 3 with one rule called vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay? The ayes have it, the rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Motion made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Scanell, to adopt resolutions 1 through 3, and we will use the?
Alder Burnett.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
I don't know if this is the case, but I just need to say to anyone on the line who is interested in the resolution regarding the schools, that we're not voting on that here, that will be voted on in two weeks, I just want to make sure they know we're not voting on that resolution, under these resolutions.
Yeah, good point. Okay, so with that said, we will use the board on resolutions 1 through 3. And those are adopted 12-0. Onto ordinance's first reading.
Motion to advance.
Second.
Motion to advance made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
I'm so sorry. Hold on. I couldn't, it was still on the screen. So sorry. Motion?
So ordinance's first reading, a motion was made to advance.
Don't we have to suspend the rules first to take them all up?
Yes.
Yes.
Suspend the rules.
Second. Someone else seconded it.
Motion has been made to suspend the rules, take up those ordinances with one roll call vote. It's been made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? You guys have it? The rules are suspended.
All right, move to advance?
Yep.
Okay.
Not done.
Motion has been made to advance items one through two, one and two, to a second and final reading. The motion was made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. All in favor will signify by saying aye?
Aye.
What was nay? You guys have it? And those items have been advanced to final adoption. Ordinance's first and final reading. So we do need a suspension of the rules to adopt the face covering ordinance on one reading here, which requires.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. All in favor will signify by saying aye?
Aye.
What was nay?
Nay.
You guys have it? And the rules are suspended.
Excuse me, Mayor, I'm sorry. Who was the nay?
That was John Vanderly.
Thank you.
But that was just a, a voice vote. So now we are on the adoption of that item, which just takes a, a simple majority, but we will use the board there. We're starting to entertain a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Oh, second.
Give it to Corpus Dax. Give it to.
Motion to adopt made by Alder Corpus Dax, seconded by Alder Dorf. And we will use the board. There we go. Just popped up. And that is adopted 10 to 2.
My apologies. Could you switch mine to a no? I clicked the wrong button.
Uh.
Motion to reconsider my vote?
I, I.
Unless you can switch it.
Yes, I can switch it.
Okay, thanks.
I think you're stuck.
That has been noted. Onto petitions and communications. You did a shout at me.
I just wanted to.
Alder LeFave, go ahead.
Yes, I have two. The second one I'm gonna, I'm trying to think of it. Anyway, protection and policy. To look at, to look at, I'm sorry.
Varying?
It's late. To look at varying aspects of Green Bay licensed alcohol establishments with a discussion on a moratorium. The second one, to the Arts Commission rotating art program. I would like the commission to consider the neighborhood in decisions on what will, would be placed there. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Burnett?
Yeah, a motion to the Protection and Policy Committee to forward our face covering ordinance to the Brown County Health Department for review.
Any others?
I just wanted to clarify with Clerk Jeffries, you did get my email? Or do you want me to read it in or?
Thank you, Alder. I did get your email. Now I'll move on to Deputy Clerk for inclusion in the next page of the agenda.
Then it, then we don't have to pay for it if you do it that way. Very wise, Alder Weary.
I listen to you once in a while.
I've heard you say that before, Alder Scannell.
Yeah.
Sounds like a civics issue.
Any others?
I'm just gonna clip the part that says very wise, Alder Weary. I'm just gonna clip it out and use it.
Right, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to refer.
Second.
Motion's been made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder LeFave, to refer all lay petitions and communications to proper authority. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
What was nay? You guys have it?
Motion to adjourn.
Back it.
Made by Alder Corpus Dax, seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
You guys have a word adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Take care, everybody. Have a good weekend.
Bye-bye.